Okay, very good. I'll start with our standard statement here. So, once again, I've confirmed with town council that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March 13, 2020 executive order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance for the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and hear tonight's meeting, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. I have done a roll call of the board members. Well, sort of did. So, we have four. We have a quorum. And there's a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed that this meeting has been duly noticed. A link has been provided so that the public can view and participate in the meeting. Furthermore, a video of this meeting will be made available on public access TV and the town's website. As always, the agenda and all materials considered for tonight's meeting are available for viewing on the town's website. So, before we get started, if you are not a panelist, please mute your... like that, please mute your microphones, and we'll move into our meeting. This is September 8, and we're calling the meeting to order here at a little after 7 o'clock. Our first item tonight is a decision matter. This is the Meadow Hill subdivision lot number one. This is an application for a site development plan approval, wetlands and stormwater permits, consideration of the draft resolution. So, the draft resolution has been circulated. I hope that the applicant has also had a chance to take a look at the draft resolution. And we'll proceed from there. Are there any issues or questions from board members on the resolution?
I just have a... I'm just curious. Why doesn't this lot have a postal address by now?
I don't know. Don't know. I had one question. I'd actually talked to Jen earlier today, and if you recall during our conversation, this is a lot that I think the board was perfectly happy with and satisfied with the proposition from the applicant to continue to maintain much of the property, if not most of it, as open meadow and clearing it from, you know, a couple times a year, maintaining it as a meadow. So, my issue is that I thought we had decided that we would set a grading limit line and then a separate clearing limit line, which would be substantially larger and would match what the applicant wanted. And I talked to Jen this morning, so she said, "For the first time I've ever heard, you can do whatever you want." Last time I heard that was from Les, and he said, "Of course, you'll lose in court." But she said, "We can do that. We can set up a separate clearing line and a separate grading line." I think that makes sense, because I think that's the intention of the applicant, and I think it's the intention of the board to grant the ability of this applicant to maintain the meadow, almost to the property lines in some cases, and then leave it to Dennis, and Bob, and Sabrina, and the applicant to work on the declaration that would actually set forth the very detailed lines of that grading and clearing limit lines. Now, the grading limit line, I would propose, would be very close to what we have right now as the original lines for disturbance for construction of home. If they need to be expanded a little bit to accommodate the applicant for constructions, fine by me. But I think, in this particular case, this is very unusual. We really need to have separate lines.
That's good to me. I agree.
Okay. Eldad, does that make sense to you as well?
Absolutely. It also sounds like it's in accordance with the applicant's wishes, and so, I mean, all good to me.
Yep. I think the applicant's here.
Chairman Allen.
Yeah. Is that okay, Allen? Does that make sense?
Yes, members of the board. Yes, that makes perfect sense. We did discuss at the last meeting that we would meet with Dennis Corelli on the property. We have not done that yet, but it's certainly something that we will do and can do to establish that line, and then we'll put it on a plan, just so it's something that we can agree to. On our plans, we did submit what we call an earth disturbance line, and we also had a limited disturbance line on it. But we discussed that the last time. But yes, we can come up with a line that's somewhat between the two that would be acceptable both to, you know, our client and also to the board.
I would also say it needs a street address at some point before it's occupied. And that should be in there as a minor detail somewhere.
Sure. Dennis, Bob, and Sabrina, does that make sense? Do you feel comfortable that you can, you know, work out that line, and we can have that set forth in the declaration? That'll be recorded?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Makes perfect sense.
I as well.
Okay. Great. Yes, yep.
I've got something. When you're ready for it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, maybe somebody can catch me up on this, but on page... What page is it? It's actually, it's condition, it's number five, and I guess it's on the fourth page, bottom of the page. It talks about the... It looks like the documentation for tree survey, landscaping plan, et cetera, et cetera, needs to be done before the application is approved. I got, I didn't see that in the packet. Was that something that had already been submitted?
Would you like me to address that?
Sure. Buddy, yeah.
It was not something that was in there. It was actually part of the discussions at the prior meeting, that this landscaping plan would actually identify the lawn to meadow and what's going to be maintained. And we agreed that, you know, there probably would be, obviously, there will be some type of foundation plantings around here. But the rest of the site, as you know, is basically a mown lawn. So, that's how we had left it.
What about the tree survey? There's a B in this condition five.
Right. There's a... There are trees which are shown on the plan. I think that Mr. Corelli just wanted us to update it, and there was, I think, one tree in the eastern portion of the lot. He just wants to make sure we had shown. That was really about it. We met him on the site about a few weeks ago, and that's what we discussed.
So, I guess I'm to take it that in this onsite meeting, you and Dennis, Dennis, you will be able to resolve these issues and be certain that there is a drawing that attaches to this approval before Bob signs it?
Yes. There were just additional... Again, nothing's supposed to be removed. I just couldn't locate some of those trees, and we were discussing that on the property, the one specific that I was referring to, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that. It's just that it's actually in here in the resolution, and since it's in the resolution, we have to be sure that it's, you know, that it's done before Bob signs, unless I'm mistaken, before Bob signs the, you know, signs it.
Understood.
All these conditions, all these conditions, we have to review and make certain they're all done, and we check off on the conditions before I write the memo to Robert to sign it. So, it will all be done.
It's just as unusual that this has been done, you know, after this meeting, rather than us getting a chance to review it. And that's, I have no problem with that, because I think that the issues really here are de minimis. But just as a matter of procedure, it's an unusual way to do it. So, I just wanted to be sure that we were going to do this properly. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
I do want to make it understood that, so Bob and Sabrina will work with the applicant to finalize where those lines are located. Are there any conditions about maintaining that meadow area? Is there any restrictions on how often they can mow, or we trust that, you know, clarifying that it's just to maintain the meadow is clear enough? I just want to make sure that's understood by everyone.
Good point.
Yeah, I don't know if we got to that level of detail. Kind of left it to the applicant. We went to some detail in terms of the extent of that meadow area, where that might extend to, and maintaining those borders and the fences and some of the invasives along the fenced area. But Drew, you raised a good issue. I don't know if we got to that detail, nor do I know if we really wanted to get to that detail, but it's something we should consider. Board members, what do we, what do we think about this?
Well, in a way, what she is suggesting is some sort of maintenance plan. And usually, we have a maintenance plan for this kind of activity, and I don't see why we shouldn't have one here.
Allen, do you have some sort of idea or some sort of concept in mind in terms of what the maintenance of the lawn or meadow area? There's a difference, I think, between a lawn, of course, and a meadow. I keep using the term meadow, but let's make sure we all understand each other.
Right. Well, meadows typically mown, I call it, later in the fall, after the meadow plants have been flowered. So, it's typically when it's done. It can also be mowed in early spring, but that's about it. Lawn, of course, is mowed more frequently.
Right.
Right. The purpose of the minimum once a year, as I understand it, for a meadow maintenance mowing is to keep the woody plants out, the trees and so on, growing in. And I've understood that two times a year is a typical cycle. But if people feel that once a year is fine, that's okay with me.
I think twice a year is kind of the common way, but I just want to make sure that that's consistent with what the applicant had in mind, because if it's inconsistent, we should really hear about that, if there's objection to it. Again, I don't know if the plan was to keep it as a lawn. I think the board had really been talking about it as a meadow and had presumed that it would be once, twice, maybe three times a year, as Tom said, just to maintain it against the woody product.
Well, the other consideration is, as Dick, I think, rightly points out, we've done this before.
Yep.
And so, there is precedent here, and we have put the onus on other applicants who now are maintaining their property, apparently, or should be, according to our direction, at a certain level of mowing or, and certain level of maintenance. And we ought to, seems to me, to try and be consistent instead of sort of unintentionally favor one applicant over another.
I mean, I would also want to not be too onerous on the property owner. And so, if there's an issue of consistency with prior approvals, then, you know, as minimal requirement, I mean, because then it gets into also enforcement issues and just dealing with that sort of thing, you know, as minimal requirement, if we're going to say mow once a year, twice a year, whatever is the absolute minimum necessary to kind of give some level of comfort and be consistent, that seems to make the most sense to me.
Yeah, I agree, Eldad. If we can get away with once a year without, you know, tripping ourselves up with any precedent that might be out there, I think that Alan's, I think it was Alan's suggestion that it be done in the fall, which makes perfect sense to me, that you would want to do it then. So, that would, that would be okay with me if we think that we're not going to be in trouble.
I'm okay.
Allen, does that make sense? Is that okay?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
And again, I think of what we should, going back to the earlier comment that I made, it seems to me that the line, the grading line, which will be much closer to the home, perhaps that would be the lawn area, that would be maintained, you know, on a more regular basis as lawn, and the balance is meadow once a year in the autumn, after the summer growing season. So, if that is acceptable, I think that would make some sense.
I agree.
I would like to have the opportunity to meet with Dennis on the property, just so we can define that location.
I think if Dennis understands the consensus of the board, I feel perfectly comfortable leaving it up to Dennis to resolve all these issues, in addition to if someone can look into any previous applications with regard to meadow mowing, to be sure that we're not making a big mistake there. If somebody on town staff, if it's Dennis or whoever, could just check on that, I'm comfortable with all these things being resolved and just going ahead.
I agree.
Yep, I agree. Okay. So, Drew, how do we do this? We have a couple of loose ends on this resolution. We don't have the actual language. I don't think we want to take the time to try to wordsmith it back and forth here. What's the procedure that we should pursue here? Do you want to do something that's conditional, subject to, you know, I'm talking about the language of the resolution, or you just want to hold it over for our next meeting and have it finalized and ready for adoption with these various changes?
That's up to the board. We can do it both ways. We can hold it over to the next meeting, and then you can adopt it with the final language in place, or you can adopt it to, adopt it subject to the conditions we discussed this evening with the grading and clearing line, or establishing the clearing and grading line as approved by the environmental coordinator.
Right. I would be more comfortable, frankly, having the language from us, but I'll leave it to whatever board members want to do. I'm fine with.
Well, I guess what I would say is that I assume that whatever document is produced that formalizes what Dennis and the applicant are going to resolve is a document that, whether it's a drawing or a drawing to text, is a document that, Bob, you will look at before you sign. And so, I would be perfectly comfortable with relying on your good judgment to just go on it.
I would imagine this would be a declaration, Drew, and then you'd have a map attached to it. That's how we generally do all of them. We have a declaration, which is signed by the applicant, filed down the county, and there's a map that's approved by whomever that goes attached to it.
Yes, absolutely. The lines will be reflected on the, in the declaration and the plan attached to it.
Okay. So, then, we can entertain a motion then to adopt the resolution, subject to the changes that will be made on an administrative basis. And I guess, right, we can entertain that motion, I guess, or someone like to make a motion or have a change slightly or whatever, and we can move it forward. Okay, second?
Second.
I have to go to the roll call. So, Eldad?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So, four ayes. Okay, very good. So, we're all set on that one, and we move forward now to our next item on the agenda. And the next item is Meadow Hill subdivision lot number two, application for site development plan approval, wetlands and stormwater permits. Sabrina, you had some notes on this. Perhaps we can, you could help us, and we can move this along and see what we need to consider.
Sure. As far as my review of the latest set of plans, they've complied with everything that, all of my comments, you know, all the changes that I had requested. We did have one public comment submitted, and the applicant did respond late today. I'm not sure if it was forwarded to you, but, Allen, I don't know if you're prepared to speak on that. Each year, my office gets a call from, or an email from one of the neighbors regarding the maintenance of the hill along King Street. And it's something that, in Matt Moran's correspondence today, he did address, but I don't know if the board received copies of that. So, Allen, are you familiar with that?
I'm somewhat familiar with it, but I can at least speak, at least discuss what Matt had written.
Okay. I think that that's important, because, you know, we've gone back and forth over the years with whose responsibility it is, so on and so forth. So, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that this has been an ongoing issue that we are hearing from the neighbor. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to you, Allen, to kind of talk about that, but not to discount any comments that Bob or Dennis may have regarding the application.
Sure. Now, I'll just read first what he had written, because I don't know if the other board members had seen this. And it does explain it quite well. So, the plantings on the Route 120 slope, and I think... I can share this screen even.
That would be great. I will forward it at the same time.
Which is just the planting plan for it that was provided.
Right.
You know, they were signed off with acceptance of the prior, from Steve Coleman, prior environmental coordinator. And so, the design intent for the planting within the deer fence was to be maintained until it could be returned to a native woodland. The plantings within the fence were not to be groomed, but weeded and protected from deer until such time as they were established. The area outside the deer fence was to be planted with a no-mow mix that grows slowly, very slowly, as Trump used here. It may need mowing, but should not need mowing more than once or twice a year. And this work is being done annually by Total Turf Landscaping. I guess that's primarily this area out here that's concerned. Once in the spring and once in the fall maximum, which is pretty typical of meadows. This is not to be cut and groomed as what a homeowner do his lawn on a weekly basis. The last area of the plantings were junipers on the slope at the intersection of 120 and North Place. These are to grow into a tight mass of low ground cover, because engineering do not want sightlines or any utilities blow affected. And he said, "Please see attached, he has built from our landscape architect, that's Earl Govins," and approved by Steve Coleman, which allowed for some red line changes. Earl Govan was scheduled to do his annual inspection this month, and if indicates the juniper's have suffered, then the issue would be corrected, as with anything else in his report. And that was what Matt had written. So, I guess the concern is probably at this end of the area. It's quite planted.
Is there a specific reference, Sabrina, in this, I guess you call it a complaint? Is there a specific reference to any particular part of that landscape that needs to be, that hasn't been appropriately taken care of, or is it just a general comment?
There's specific reference, I think, to the area that Allen pointed to. But I'm going to check while we're talking. I just had it up. Yeah, I think it's most likely the area near King Street-North Place intersection. I guess previously, it was stated that the homeowners association would be maintaining this. You know, according to Matt's email, it appears as if it is going to be maintained, or I don't know if it is maintained. I'm not sure.
He indicated this in that letter, that it's being maintained currently by Total Turf Landscaping.
Right.
That's, that's what he indicated.
Yeah.
So, the reason I ask is that there's really quite a difference between the intent, I think, of the planning board back then, and I remember this all this very well, of having that landscaping in the center part that you pointed out, where all the trees and shrubs are to be, Allen, to be given a chance to go back to its natural state. And in the process of doing that, that could look like it's not being maintained at all and be something that some folks are unhappy with. And even in this final state, somebody might say, "Well, gee whiz, you know, they just let this, they let this whole area go."
And I will say, and I don't know if this is true, and this is something that maybe, I don't mean to interrupt you, Tom, but Amy Pappas just emailed me and said that there haven't been any plantings and that junipers. And so, the question is, has this area been planted in accordance with this plan?
That's a good question.
And I think in the past, I also recall this application, I recall earlier complaints. Again, it seems to me that it might be that this once-a-year mowing might be too infrequent, because by the time we get to that time of year where it's time to mow it, it looks really unkempt. And of course, it is mostly grass, and it's mostly grass intentionally because the engineers wanted to maintain maximum sightlines, which makes great sense. So, it might be that the maintenance schedule for that area, perhaps we should look at it a little bit more frequently than once a year, because by the time you get to August or September, before it comes in, they come in for the cutting, it can look very unkempt. And I think that's what I've heard in the past on complaints on this application.
But Sabrina?
Excuse me. This is Paul Galero, the applicant.
Paul.
And we're okay, if you want it cut more frequently, you know, just give us that directive. But, you know, we were told once, twice a year, and that's what we're doing. So, you know, you can discuss among yourselves. If you want it cut on a monthly basis, we'll cut it monthly.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Paul. Yeah, I think that's something that we can, if we can pinpoint exactly if that is really what the complaint is, I think it's, there might be a very easy resolution to this matter, which has come up more than once.
Sabrina, the emails that you forwarded from previous year's complaints and this year's complaints indicate that, I'm not entirely sure who, but someone is paying to have some of this work done, and that they don't want to be doing that anymore, collecting funds to have it done. So, it sounds like what is anticipated by the nearby homeowners association to be, the regularity of it is not what's being met, and then they feel the obligation to do it themselves.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say?
I would say so, but, you know, I have also heard that, you know, that it, there's, it's really just, it appears to be weeds, not grass, and that, you know, the homeowners association is not mowing it.
The property, the property is being maintained by the homeowner by agreement. And, you know, I think the issue here is, how often should it be maintained? And I think that that's basically it. You know, if you want it maintained more often, then just tell us to do that.
Well, you know, this is, this is very interesting, to me anyway, because the other way, this is not your typical meadow context here that maybe is applying, that we are applying to the previous application in terms of, you know, the field in front of the, in front of the house. This actually is, looks like it's part of a, you know, it's part of a roadway right of way. I mean, it's literally, it's not part of the town right of way, I don't think, but it definitely looks like it's... And, you know, sometimes people complain because the town doesn't come through and mow the, you know, the side of the road often enough, and it gets to look weedy and unkempt. And so, this is a different condition than the meadow, the interior meadow. And maybe it does require a more frequent mowing because of its context.
I suspect that's, that has been the issue. I suspect that instructing or permitting the applicant, I mean, we have actually instructed the applicant, do not cut more than once or twice a year. It's in the resolution. So, if we permit the applicant to mow this area more frequently, I think it will help resolve this concern and these complaints. We're the ones that have restricted the applicant with what we had in mind.
Well, and I think a way to smooth it is that, you know, we said on the prior one, Meadowland, or Meadow Hill one, that once was enough, that would be the minimum that it should be. Or Meadow Hill one, that once was enough, that would be the minimum that it should be mowed. And, you know, I think the homeowner in that case will look at it and say, oh, it's really kind of overgrown. I think I'll do it again. But this is out of sight in a way, therefore out of mind. So I think it does have to be. Maintained properly. And that may be some grass mowing, it may be that, you know, that someone has to go in and knock down some weeds or something. To more frequently than once or twice a year. So, you know, I think a minimum of three times a year would be more than adequate for this. And it it counts more because, you know, it's, it's, it's a roadside. Arboretum in a way. And it should look nice.
So are we? Is that what we want to do to take care of this, respond to this complaint? Give the applicant more flexibility in terms of mowing this area? As they see fit to maintain it at a level that will be more pleasing and generate less complaints?
Well, I don't think we want to get free rein. But I think we should, we should. You know, set it higher than one time a year.
I mean, is it possible to mow it, you know, every, you know? Every couple of weeks during the growing season?
Well, I think once a month during the growing season might be appropriate. But that's, that's a lot. So I would say. A lot depends on what really is the content of it. How much is grass and how much is bushes and and low small trees? You know, the grass. If it's just going to be grass and it's not meadow grass, if it's meadow, if it's slow grow meadow grass, well, then it should be twice a year, probably. If it's going to be regular lawn, then it should be. Let's see. Say four times a year, which would be a little, little bit more than, you know, once. A little less than once a month.
But we're not asking the applicant to reseed this area. I mean, it is what it is. And the applicant has made the offer unless I'm mistaken, if we say once a month, then he, they're happy to do it once a month. You know, which would be during the growing season, which I guess would be, I don't know, from like April to, you know, October or September. You know, which is what, six times a year, five times a year, whatever, whatever the heck that is. And I don't know why we just don't take up that.
Seven times.
Yeah, well, so I don't know why we just don't take up that offer and just, you know, be done with it.
I agree.
If the offer still stands.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
And it may be helpful if the town receives complaints that we have, you know, we can keep emailing you. Are you transferring this responsibility to the homeowners association when it, when and if it is formed? How are you resolving that?
It's part of the homeowners association.
Right. And so that association, has that been formed yet or not yet?
Yes.
It has been formed. So maybe providing the town with a contact for that homeowners association?
Matt Moran has been the contact for the past three years. And I'm pretty sure that Amy has his telephone number.
I'm pretty sure she does.
Many times, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
So that's it for me. You know, I would defer comments to Bob and Dennis.
Okay, very good. Bob, you have comments?
We're talking about lot two now.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I want to be on the right thing here. Yeah, lot two had a few comments. What I do now, just to make things easier for everyone, I. Keep track of the ones that are complete or not, but starting off basically ST1. There are a few things that have to be submitted, even though Alan did calculate the calculations I needed to see. I like to see the full hydrographs as well, which you'll PDF to me, which is fine. That's ST1. Then we get to ST3. Some of those items have, obviously were on the plan, I did not pick up on it, like AB and I think H. However, the hill will address C, D, E, F, and G. In the next application, or these items I'm mentioning. When I'm done, I have no problem with these being put in the resolution of conditions. ST4. I'd recommend that berm goes all the way down to the stormwater basin number two. And I know kind of why they cut it off. They didn't want to go into the wetlands buffer, but I think that needs to be done to make certain the water goes into where it should go. So that's ST4. I don't know if Alan can point that out. Or maybe I can. Let me show you on here. Are you sharing the screen? I think so. I'm going to draw on it. It's a southern swale, the northern swales up here. Good. See right here, guys? This contour here. Should be extended to hit this. And this to come all the way down. To here. Because I don't want the water going. This way. So he's got a contour, this contour, show a proposed grade, proposed grade, proposed grade, to make certain it gets into that point. So that's ST4. The next one is GC1, which is incomplete. Just a typo, basically, he showed, I think, one and a half, it should be two inch. Just a typo on the labeling of the type of pipe. The next comment, which is incomplete, was. New comments I have NC1. The two proposed swales, I'm going to draw on them again. Are here. And here. These are very important swales to pick up water. More around here to make certain it goes into the basin. Years passed, it was missing some of it and going off site. Big problem. You want to make certain it gets into where it's going. So to make certain these things are maintained in perpetuity, just in case the person sells it and they have new landscapers come in and obliterate these things, I'd recommend highly. That there's a declaration. That's looked at by Drew and I. To make certain that this is forever memorialized and filed down county. So when these properties are sold. The new owner realizes that these two swales are very critical to the function of the stormwater, and they have to be maintained in perpetuity. So that's NC1. NC2 basically is a technical item with these pumping, he has Alan, right now has a. Pump station that goes lift force man that goes from here and ties into here. This is all has to be tested when they build it, and I, Alan, did I believe agree to that, that's NC2. NC3, they're bringing in about nine foot of fill. To fill up this foundation to the slab. And I would recommend that they show at least a cut and fill for that. That's NC3. And NC4, since they're bringing in so much fill, we always like to keep track to make certain the fill is brought from reputable places and other places such as. Delivery date, origin of fill, type of fill and certification by engineer. So we don't have the problem, not that you're going to do it here. We've had it in the past that these things are. B and D material, and there's all kinds of problems with that. So the reason I put all those notes in. Is to make certain that we have some enforcement capability during the filling operations for the site. And those are my comments.
Okay, good. Thank you, Bob. Bob, I, the, this, I can't do it. But when you're in the first couple of lines that you drew there for the first swell, where you wanted the swell to continue to the south. Just above that, it looks like a spreader. So I guess that's a spreader that goes out toward the wetland to the, I think it's the east. Yeah, right there. Is that what happens? It's a, it's an overflow spreader from the depression, the detention pond? And just above that, that little pipe, looks like a little.
Yeah, when this fills up, Alan can explain it better than me, but this is basically an overflow weir.
Right.
To go that way.
Is there sufficient drop in 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 the grade there to make sure it goes into the, you know, directed into the wetland?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Okay, fine.
Yeah, this is a different, different topic than this, but it's critical it gets to this point here. The low point, which is the lowest point in the basin.
Okay. Good. Dennis, you had some comments?
Yes, I am. I'm just trying to, I guess, almost keep track of the cataloging of. You know, plantings that have been completed, plantings that are going to be completed, because obviously in. In seeing the site, you know, obviously a number of, another things that have been done and. Was climbing up in his letter to sort of allude to that with respect to mentioning that the wetland buffers depicted. Had been completed, but some of the stormwater manager basement number, basin number two plantings had not yet been completed. So that really is my, my first comment, just to sort of flesh that out. So moving forward, knowing what would be required, you know, planting in terms of list and location. We've had meetings at the site and have discussed prior to that meeting with respect to this lot in particular. And this pertains to bullet two, that, you know, there is an extensive amount of deer fencing. And, you know, that's one method, you know, for herbivory control, and I guess the applicant has expressed. A desire to use less deer fencing. And I, you know, just want to sort of have established, you know, what those alternative methods would be for herbivory control. If we're not going to use deer fencing in certain areas for concern of the. Potential homeowner not wanting to see so much fencing. So I just want to, you know, have that flushed out a little bit more as to be included. As part of the future painting. And then the third item, getting back to a fence, I thought I had seen a proposed fence in the. Rear yard of the residence, and I just felt maybe it would be a good idea if we could. Just overlay the planting area plans that have yet to be completed in relation to that fence, because I just don't want. I mean, it looks like it seems reasonably spaced, but I just like to see it together because I, you know, you don't want that fence on top of the plantings because that just. Potentially creates issue with respect to, you know, fence impacting plantings, plantings looking to bust through the mess of the, mesh of the fence. A landscaper is naturally going to, you know, try to take care of the landscape part of the property and. You don't want necessarily the cuttings of those shrubs. So any of those. Issues just to avoid, I'd just like to see where that is in relation on the, on the plan.
Dennis, is that a step, is that a separate fence, or is that the deer fencing that we're referring to?
There was something on the plan that it had listed. I thought a proposed fence. Proposed fence location. I didn't think it had to do with deer fencing. Alan, if I'm missing something.
There's no. I was going to say, there's no proposed fencing in the rear of this property at all. And actually, what? The applicant is interested in is trying to remove some of the fencing from the proximity of lot two, but leave it behind. You know, stormwater basin number one. That was the intention. The planting area that was still needed is just in this area. That's essentially where it is. It was part of the original approval from Meadow Hill, but, you know, associated with the development of lot two, so that's why it hadn't been done yet. But there wasn't, but there's no fencing that was thought of behind, there was some fencing behind the pond on lot number two, but none between the pond and the house at all.
But the deer fencing that we see on the plan looks to be quite extensive.
It is.
Seems to must go around the entire property.
No, it isn't the entire property, but the deer fencing is through this area here.
Right. Well, it looked around to the front, too, I think, if I'm reading it correctly. Seems like it loops in front of that southern detention pond as well. It's a very tanked line, but it's fairly extensive, right?
It is fairly extensive there, but it is, yeah, this is.
Yeah. Exactly.
Correct. But it, there was no fencing ever proposed here, this part of it. That's what I was sort of alluding to.
Oh, I see. I thought I saw it there. Okay.
No, it isn't there at all. And we just talked about trying to remove some of it from the rear of lot number two and down to about here or so. So this area doesn't have, I'll say, the Marcha fence posts, so proximate to it. So we were discussing providing other means to prevent herbivory from occurring.
And what would those be?
Well, we were actually trying to, you know, some of it would be spray, some of the trees are actually tall enough that they're beyond the reach of. Of a lot of the deer now. They're tall enough that they have a very difficult time reaching them. So I really think it's really just a matter of protecting shrubs. And that would probably be done more through. Diligent spraying would be the term I would use, but there may be other techniques that we end up using.
Is the deer fencing that black mesh that we normally see?
Yes.
Six foot black mesh? Okay.
Yes.
Hey, Alan?
Yes.
You know, another. Solution is just buying deer resistant plants. You don't have to introduce these, you know, pesticides into the, in the environment. I mean, we, my property is not fenced and we get deer through here, but, you know, they pretty much leave alone what we have in here. Because we just put that stuff in instead of.
Well, we could look at doing that, too, maybe supplementing it somehow. We'll figure something out. I can't disagree with you. I have seen deer go after plants that surprise me when they're really hungry, you know?
Yeah, when they're really hungry in the wintertime, they'll, you know, they'll eat anything and everything. That's true. That's true. But, you know, deer fences, I don't know, what's the nature of this deer fence? Is it, is it one of those? Black plastic ones, or is it a chain link fence, a metal fence?
It's, it's black plastic with the, but the posts are like, you know. Six to eight feet apart, so it's the Marcha posts that you see.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, thank you.
I will say, just, just so we can. Identify what we did do in revising the plan, just to re-summarize it. Is, we obviously, you know, as, as requested by the planning board, the garage now faces to the north. And the driveway is now coincident with the actual filed easement. For maintenance of basin number two for about the first 60 feet or so, and then it veers off and provides that access. You know, so when we submitted back in July or June, whatever it was, you know, obviously we had the front facing. Garage, but, you know, as per the planning board request, we did relocate the driveway and relocate the garage, you know, so that's why we're here today.
Yep, that's good.
And because the garage was here and the berm actually ran like right through here, which is why we relocated, because we're so close to this. Driveway now. So that's why we ended up relocating. Whoops, relocating the swale.
Yeah, and in your, in your submission. There are some elevations of the revised building. And I think it all worked out very well, and thank you for addressing it right away. I think it's more successful from a, from a view, also from an architectural point of view.
I would also just like to point out, we did include, you know, the way the driveway is with the stone shoulder on it. Which did not extend into the cul-de-sac. What we did do here is include that stone shoulder with a curb and a new catch basin. The idea being, the, the problem that we have had or. Is that some of the runoff from lot number one would come through here and to the properties to the north. But by putting a catch basin and a curb along here and picking that up. And putting into the already existing storm drainage system, that should alleviate some of the flows that are actually going into the swale. I just want to point that out. It's one of the, you know, other items that was put onto this plan.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from board members?
No.
If not, is there a motion? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Tom.
I just had one more, and maybe I'm, could you put that plan back up again for a second, Alan?
Sorry. Yes, I hope I can.
And I, maybe I, I sort of lost track of this one also, but I thought in the last meeting we were talking about. Getting some landscaping along that, what are the coordinates here? Along that property line, which is to the top. here? Along that property line, which is to the top of the page because of the neighbors. And this is one of the things that we actually, I think, had talked about in our original site visit out there. And I don't see any drawings that indicate that we're, that you're intending to do anything there.
That, that area is kind of woodsy as it is right now. That's my recollection, but...
Okay, well, maybe that was the resolution. That is already, that there's already planting there.
I have to, I don't want to run to an aerial right now, but I could, but if I had to.
I do remember when we were out there, maybe it was not for this lot, maybe it was the lot to the left. We were concerned about the exposure to the adjacent houses back there, adjacent properties back there.
Tom, do you mean the ones that are down the hill?
Yeah.
I think those, yeah, that, I think you said it right. We, we had some problems with water drainage down that way and, and, and also visibility.
I'm just trying to see if I could pull something up here just so we can see it.
Here we are.
See to show it. I don't know, is that even visible here?
I see it, but I don't know where I am.
Oh, this is basin number two. That's slot number three. That's the end of the cul-de-sac?
Right.
Here. That's what I'm trying to show here. I'm just saying, there is some, there is some, it's really shrubby stuff that's here. Just taking a winner, obviously. That's already here. And the swale actually runs like that. So really, you can kind of see it here. So.
Well, that's, that's sort of demonstrates the problem, doesn't it, or the concern?
That.
That visibility is exposed to the, to the house, to the top of the, two houses to the top of the page, especially the one on the right.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
That the, this lot is almost entirely exposed to that house, which we see at the top of the page.
Okay. But the house would be constructed over here in this location.
No, I understand. It's, it's constructed, what, on high ground, right?
No, not really.
Well, but you, but it's visible. It, nonetheless, visible, right?
Yeah. It probably would be visible.
Exactly.
So are you concerned to put something in this?
Yeah, I thought we talked about this. I mean, I'm sure.
I don't, I don't recall that, but that's fine.
This is Paul Galero. I'd like to jump in. You know, that lot, the house you're talking about, part of their condition of their approval was that they planted a row of evergreens along their driveway, which creates a buffer between this property and that house. Right there, that's correct.
Are those actual trees? They look like they're kind of shrubby.
Yeah.
Oh, they're pretty big trees. I, I think they're, if I remember correctly, they were six to eight foot when they were planted.
Okay. This could be an older picture too. So it could have been a couple of years ago and they may have grown.
Yeah, they don't, look, if you look at, if you look at the, the shadows, those are not trees yet. I mean, they may be, the species of tree, but they haven't grown yet. So, but they, I, I guess I'm in the, in the photograph. But if it's, if it, if they've grown up to the point where they're a screen, then, you know, maybe that's, maybe it's okay.
So I'm looking at a Google Maps aerial view. And there seems to be a more substantial plantings throughout this border area between these three lots. And, and I just don't know what, when this picture was, this aerial shot on the Westchester County site was taken. And this, I'm trying to get us an idea of when this Google Maps aerial shot was taken. Looks like it was in 2020.
Okay.
I guess typically Google Maps takes photographs when there's leaf out too, so.
Maybe Dennis has to go out and take a look and, and give us an opinion as to what he sees now relative to that. Because if we need more bushes or trees, well, then he could probably give us a sense of where they should go.
Okay.
Does the applicant think that the, the, the line of trees up there from the other lot, well, that, is that sufficient? I guess, Paul, you're indicating that you thought that was going to be sufficient. Well, when does it grow? Perhaps now?
It, it was definitely a condition of whatever approval you had given them. And they were concerned on whether they should, you know, put them all in or not. I remember the discussion, but I, I, it's been three or four years, to be honest with you.
Right.
But there is a line of evergreens there. You know, we can always take a look at it when Dennis comes out to the site.
Well, another, another thing that we often do is that where you have cars that are going in and out of a garage, we ask for a buffer right around there so that the lights, you know, don't bother people on other properties, which would be, that would be a much smaller thing to do. And maybe that would be something that would actually balance the, the trees that are next to the driveway on the, the, let's say, the northern property. They had to put something in so that the light headlights didn't spill over and also that broke up the view of the house. So maybe that's something that Dennis could also look at.
Yep. Yep, that's always one of our chief concerns. Thanks, Dick.
Welcome. Okay, any other issues? If not, we can set forth a, consider a motion to schedule this for a public hearing the next available time and look forward to receipt of these couple of loose ends from the applicant in response to these various memos and this discussion. And hopefully also get time for Dennis to get out there to meet with the applicant and finalize what we need to see up there.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. El Dan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And, yeah, so four zero. So Felicia, what does it look like? Felicia and Sabrina, what does it look like for scheduling a public hearing for this application? You know, in terms of deadlines for materials to be received and the openings on the agenda?
Sabrina? I'm, I have it here. Alan, are you looking, do you think you would be looking at October 6th or October 20th?
I would say the 6th.
Okay, that has a deadline of September 14th.
A week.
Do you have a week? Is that enough?
Yes.
Okay, so then the public hearing should be set for October 6th.
Okay. Good.
Great.
We'll plan to see you then. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Okay, we move now to our next item. And this is Nickich, Eight Centia Court, application for a site development plan and final subdivision plot approval, Brandywine subdivision lot number six. This is an informal hearing on this matter. So I believe we're here because we had some changes in the field that were revealed or discovered at some point, I guess, just before the applicant was granted a CO. And some inconsistencies with clearing and grading, steep slopes, et cetera, from what we had approved. So from there is maybe the applicant's engineer can help us with this and lead us in this discussion here, just to give us an update as to what occurred in the field.
Yes. First of all, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, lot six was, it was a very challenging lot before the.
Can you speak closer to, or move the mics up so we can hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Adjust your microphone.
I don't have one. It's off the computer.
Ah, all right. You seem very far away. Speak up.
Okay, how's that?
That's better. You're getting closer to your computer, which has the voice box. So that's good.
Sorry, sorry. I'm limited on the stuff I have here. So, so yes, it was a very challenging site. We had a lot of, there's a lot of cliffs, outcroppings. So in the attempt to make it just a more safeable and usable area, the contractor owner had pushed the backyard a little bit, filled in these cliffs in unsafe conditions, and it wound up pushing our slopes a bit further down the hill. Also, there are other little small areas where we had done new plantings for trees and those were reinstated, reestablished with grass after the machines had planted the trees and removed. So those areas also approached as well. I just want to add that even the, the back slopes now have fully, fully growth, natural vegetation has taken place back there. And we figured we had to come back to adjustments line. So we also, the future owners have been pushing for a pool. And we kind of want to incorporate that in this submission.
Okay. I know we have comments from, from Bob on this. And why don't we go through those, Bob? And perhaps also if you could, Anthony, if you could put a map up there so we can follow along when, when you and Bob talk. As fascinating as it is to look at each of us, the maps are better. Thank you very much. That's good. Perfect. Okay, Bob? Do we lose?
You're on mute, Bob.
Sorry about that. Let me get on annotate. I can mess up the drawing more. Nice red. Okay, basically, number one, with the pipe they put in, which I believe is from here to here, I recommend that they have some sort of plan shown to see how they can better secure that on the slope that is there. It's probably about one and a half, the one slope. And there were certain portions of it, I think, about here at the toe of the slope going this way. It was kind of just laid on grade and I wouldn't recommend that with HDB pipe because once the sun hits it for many years, it's going to deteriorate. So number one indicates that they should prepare some sort of plan to cover that up some way somehow and fasten it and secure it into the slope. So when it gets a heavy rain event, it doesn't slide down the hill. So I recommend an engineering joint on that. That's a nice dog to be showed, be properly anchored and backfilled in along the steep slope. So that's number one. Number two, the same point, this is, was angle point right here along the pipe. Obviously, anytime you have an angle point like this, you have to put a manhole or a junction box for maintenance to get to this point, or else you'll never know where it is. That's number two. Once everything's all said and done and built out on the field, I'd like to see it as built, showing everything from here to here to here, to make certain it was built in according to plan, showing the rim invert, rim invert, rim inverted in this junction box and remember that here at the existing law with the pipe slope. Those are my engineering concerns with the pipe. And I think Anthony said they did speak with John on this. Anthony, you'll be providing some sort of information on how you plan on doing that. Number four, basically, is my standard note I put in there. Obviously, they planned, they disturbed about 12,000 square feet more than they were approved. It's about 134% increase. If the planning board's inclined to approve it, I'd recommend that they do the standard clearing and grading declaration to amend it and memorialize that and have it in acceptable form to the town council and to be filed in the Westchester County Clerk's office. And those are my comments.
Very good. Thanks, Bob. Do we have any information about, it looks like this area that was filled in behind, you know, the extended clearing and grading limit lines and, and steep slopes? Probably it was just rubble from the construction debris from the foundation, et cetera. Can you tell us and speak to the stability of this area and what you've done to, to make sure it is stable?
A lot, a lot of it was really steep, steep cliffs. So those cliffs basically got filled over. You still have rock outcroppings showing in certain areas, some big boulders. Originally, it was stabilized with blank out blankets and a metal mix. Now it's fully vegetated and natural vegetation has taken it off. Nothing got washed away with that storm we previously had. So that the hill is, is really stable. It's not moving.
Is it so stable that we don't need any sort of wall at the bottom to stabilize that extended area, notwithstanding the very difficulty of getting equipment or people or down there to, to, to construct it?
No, it, it runs, it, it kind of goes along with the natural grade. There is at the bottom a bit of a flat area, and then it goes to the natural grade, which is just as steep as this slope. But the picture I'm showing you right now is that slope in the rear.
Right.
And then this is the, this is the, the bottom, which is flat. And then it goes, clips off again from the natural. So a lot of these rocks sticking out there, they were the tops of, of sheer rocks, like almost cliffs. That's the top. And it got filled over.
You're saying that those, that's actually bedrock there. That's not rubble that was filled in?
Some of it's rubble, some of it is bedrock.
Okay. But you feel confident that the area is stable and safe?
Yes.
I mean, not just, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was out there, I was out there today just to, you know, looking at it, just seeing how it held up to that storm. And it was, it was fine. There's some more.
Bob, is that something that the town could or should we require some sort of stamp on that plan to make sure that what we are seeing here is going to be stable in the future?
Well, I would require them to have the engineer of record prepare a letter and a little sketch in a slope, showing the slope, what materials in it, certifying that the slope has been constructed and is stable and vegetated. So we have that on record.
Good.
Stand by, John Keller.
Yep. And then we'll, and also that it has to be maintained. So if we have a drought or something like that, you just can't let that vegetation die. You know, so it has to have perhaps a sprinkler system or something, you know, that lets water go, or some sort of trough in a, in a way that lets the water percolate into the hill and go down the side and keep it vegetated in a drought condition.
Good point. You can include that in the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We have this other issue, it seems to me, and that's this whole issue of the pool.
Yep.
Proposed pool. It looks like as drawn, it protrudes into the front yard. I'm not so sure we've decided whether or not that would require a variance if we were inclined to approve it. But we don't normally like to see pools in the front yard or even a side yard. Obviously, construction of a pool in the rear yard is going to be, unless it's just a little kiddie pool, it would be impossible. So I think board members need to weigh in on this as well and give it some consideration.
The, the front yard setback is actually off of this line. This is the common driveway easement. So this 60 feet is the front yard setback, where I'm kind of tracing along with my hand.
Well, I'm not talking about the setback. It's just the fact that it's protruding in front of the house or very aligned with the house and therefore is considered to be, you know, at, at best in the side yard, but really at least in part in the front yard. And that's something that the town really frowns upon. And it's very, very unusual to see a, a pool permitted to have, be constructed in the front yard, even a side yard.
Yeah, we've only done this, you know, allowed this in one place. And that's where the property was set up about 25 feet from the roadway and nobody could see anything. And, but here you can see it from the driveway of, and it, and it just, it shouldn't be in the front.
Well, and also it seems to me that it's also, you know, we've already got an incursion into the, what was previously approved as clearing and grading limits areas. And now we would be extending it even further to accommodate a pool. And I'm not so sure that the, you know, the board is willing to do that as an accommodation to changing the clearing and grading limit lines that were approved before. as an accommodation to changing the clearing and grading limit lines that were approved before. And I think Dennis, you had a comment, um, in your memo, uh, somewhere. I saw, I thought a letter from you that, um, the pool selected by the applicant was one of the larger ones of all the possibilities from the manufacturer who was, uh, proposing to construct and install the pool.
Correct.
So we're going to see more, with a pool, you're going to see more cut in the front, because that has to be cut to, uh, three or four feet just to get to the level, uh, at the, at the bottom of the pool. And of course, you're going to have more construction, um, for the, uh, for the pool itself.
It's a very, it is a very large pool. What would be the justification for having such a large pool?
What the homeowners want, what the future homeowners want.
Well.
Um, on this drawing, we don't seem to have, um, the location of the house on Lot 5, and that would be important to know. You know, this is how close this pool might be to the home on Lot 5. I don't know if you've got the details yet in terms of where the pool mechanicals are going to go, and the setbacks on those, and the noise, and all those sorts of things. So that's information we would need to see and consider, uh, in connection with the, that, the pool segment of this application.
Yeah, so the pool equipment, we're going to put on a pad right on the side of the house.
Well, that's your, that's your plan, right?
Yeah.
I, I think it's too big. I think it's too forward. The clearing and, uh, the grading and clearing area, well, that's a bit of a problem also. I, I don't see why it can't be, no, it's not, the contours aren't all here, I guess, there's some. But maybe it has to be shifted more towards the, uh, you know, where it says SS, slid down a little bit. Of course, you got an underground propane tank in the way, too.
Well, that's where we're, that's where we're going to relocate. The problem is if we push the pool any further to the south, we're going to wind up going down the slopes again with this fill.
Sure. Well, the only good news would be the slope is less steep there than elsewhere, but it's still steep. So that's a problem. But so is having it in the front.
What's the access to the pool? Is that, uh, east-west?
Yes, right down in here.
East-west, okay.
Yeah, east-west, it connects to the existing pathway.
Well, I'm thinking of whatever, uh, if we consider, uh, move forward with the consideration of the pool, whatever kind of vegetative, uh, planting plan we would want toward the, uh, the driveway.
I'm sorry, keep flicking around too quick.
That's okay.
So we were looking to screening, heavy screening from the driveway into Lot 5. Now Lot 5 is under construction now, but it sits pretty far over.
Okay, but we, we need to see that. And of course, whatever the proposal is for Lot 6, but especially Lot 5, the pool is going in on that side, that property line. So we need to know what those distances are, and, and, um, again, you've got the mechanicals up against the house. Again, the, the noise will travel across the pool, so it's, uh, unabated there. We need to know what you're going to do for, you know, controlling the noise there at the mechanical site itself.
But the pool is not, let me pose it this way. Is the pool in, in violation of zoning?
Yes, I believe so. I don't know if Bob and Sabrina drew great, but. I defer to Tom on this. There's a section of code which does define the front yard as being a different line than the front yard setback. I would recommend that, you know, Tom, look at this and see what he comes up with. It's a possibility. It may need a variance. I wouldn't quite sure. I defer to Thomas on that. Oh, that Tom is the building inspector. Yes, he's the building inspector.
Yes, I actually met him, uh, earlier this week. So I, I think that that's, uh, at least from my perspective, kind of a, a critical question. If it's in violation of zoning and needs a variance, then that's a question, and maybe is, is really, uh, best, I mean, obviously best left to the zoning board, but, I mean, in general, then kind of almost is not entirely relevant to our discussion. If it's not in violation of zoning, that's also incredibly important to know, and then it's really, for me anyway, then I'm comfortable with the, the concept of the pool and even the location of the pool, but more just issues around screening and mitigating any, any concerns.
What's the distance from the, uh, from the pool to the driveway?
Oh, sorry.
The common driveway?
Common driveway. What's the distance from the pool to the driveway?
I don't have the CAD plan open per se, but I'd say you're probably looking at about.
Looks like 40, 30 feet.
I was going to say 35, 40 feet, maybe.
That's nothing. 40 feet out, outside is like, it's, it's really, that's very close to the driveway.
Even if it's a common driveway, it's an issue? Only two people driving past?
It's a driveway, and it's, it's, I, I, I guess, I wouldn't make the distinction. I guess it doesn't make any difference to me. It's a driveway. And, you know, people have, they're going to be going back and forth on that driveway. So I would be concerned about that. I guess 40 feet is enough to really put some dense, uh, screening in to be sure that that's not a problem. I think that Bob brings up a very good point about the, the air conditioners. I guess that, you know, those, those chillers which are on the outside of the house. You know, water and concrete, that's one of the best ways to bounce, right, sound off. And, um, I think it's going to potentially, make the sound worse to the property owner next door, so any screening there, which would have to be evergreen and heavily done, would be something that may help that condition.
Well, that's what these are showing, dense evergreen.
Yeah, I don't know how dense is dense, you know, I, those are, you know, the, it's one of the things I think that we probably need to look at and think about. You know, what that is and, and how much there is. I mean, if those are, depends on the.
So you have five white spruce, white, five Colorado blue spruce, and five eastern hemlocks.
Is there a possibility that you can, you could rotate the pool and perhaps select a smaller one so that it, uh, is further back down away from the driveway? I don't know what your property line is. I, you show this blue line, which is the clearing and grading limit line in the sketch. Not sure what the property line is and how much distance you have to the, I guess, to the east. But if you, if you pivoted the pool, so we brought it back away from the driveway and, and out of the front yard altogether, completely, and perhaps even a smaller pool, uh, and it looks like you would be working with a flatter, just as flat an area. Uh, I wonder if that could, uh, work, uh, for you.
I'd have to discuss that with my client to, to see how you want to go with that, if you want to go for a smaller pool.
Well, it may not be smaller necessarily. I think that would probably work better. Yeah, I think it might be a little bit tight, but, um, again, pivoting it, uh, I think would make a little bit more sense, at least from my standpoint.
Well, and also the AC units and the, the equipment thing is, it's going to make noise in the house. You know, since it's so close, and, but that's, that's something the owner can decide they like or don't like, but I would, I agree with Tom. I want, I don't really want the noise to be bouncing across the way to Lot 5, and that's why it would be good to see where that house is positioned, type of thing. But you also could muffle the units to a certain extent. Uh, and, you know, and just, you know, have a, a door or something that opens so that people can, uh, you know, the maintenance folks can get in and, and take care of the AC units annually or whatever they do.
These, these AC units are already there. These are for the house.
Okay.
Nobody hears me.
Uh, we, we hear the client speaking.
Is someone trying to speak, or are we missing someone?
Oh, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I don't have Zoom, so I'm on a different screen.
Okay.
So you hear what I can say?
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'm in agreement. I'm not sure how this pool got to be so big. If it can maybe, um, made smaller and pulled back, might require a little retaining wall downhill, uh, to pick up the slope. And, um, it's my understanding that, um, we have to take down some trees which need to be replaced, so I didn't do the math, but I got to imagine it equals to more than 15, uh, the engineer showing as a buffer.
Well, those are the, uh, that's the information that we would need to see. I would encourage you to look at that. From my standpoint, um, whether zoning or, or whether it complies or not, I just don't think it's good planning to have a pool, uh, on the side of this size and protruding into the front yard. So.
And, and I think, yeah, if you look at the size of the house, um, even if you made the pool the size of the house, it's still a quite large pool. That, the compound that you see, um, where the air conditioners and the, uh, proposed pool equipment is, that's a 20-foot box. So if you moved forward, that's about another 12, so that's a 32-foot pool, which would be more than adequate, even if it was a 36 and push it downhill, would still be in line with the house, not protruding forward.
I think the pool is bigger. If you take, there's a, a dimension of 60 feet shown, and, uh, I think the, well, maybe if you're just counting the water part of the pool, not the gates, maybe it is 32, but I think it's a little bit bigger than that.
I think it was bigger than that. That model was a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I think I would go with 40.
18 by 46 or 40, so it's.
I think that's a little bit larger than even the client wanted, so I'm not sure how that happened. The, the width is 16, that's a standard, uh, but I'm sure the client would be quite happy with a 36. And again, if we push that downhill, um, where the orange line is shown, we might require a small retaining wall to pick up the grade. But, you know, that's the price you got to pay if you want a pool, right?
I think that would be a better solution myself. And you already had somebody, I guess, this particular property, uh, this owner applicant was the one who built the, uh, this, uh, the house and put the, the retaining walls in to, um, on the back of the property. So a little bit more retaining wall in order to solve this problem, I think, I think would not be unreasonable to ask.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I also like the idea of moving it back in that it gives you more of a front yard.
Yes.
You know, for children to play on. You know, so I think that, I think that has a couple of extra benefits.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem moving the pool back. I don't see a problem using every tree allocated in a replacement plan to buffer this. And, you know, again, a little wall in the rear to level that walkway off. And then, and then we could even consider, um, if it makes sense to move the pool equipment below the wall.
Yep.
Ah, there you go.
You know, I'd just like to make the observation that it's sort of an awkward position to put a pool in relation to a house to begin with. There's, it just seemed to be not enough room and not enough of the generous area around the pool to really enjoy it as much as you could.
Right, I agree, Tom.
And moving it, moving it more to the backyard and exposing the pool, even if it means building a retaining wall, exposing the pool to the backyard, and providing a generous area around that portion of it might be a lot better. I mean, I don't think folks in this particular condition are going to go out their front door in their bathing suit to go, you know, swimming. They're probably more likely going to want to go through the back door. So I would suggest.
Yeah, the walkway that you see leads from a walkout basement. So I think their, I think their vision was eventually to make basement as a summer living area.
Right.
So they would be primarily using that walkway to walk through a door, um, that's in the lower level. And at some point, they would, you know, in conjunction with the pool permit, they were going to get a permit to finish the lower level.
Well, then, uh, even putting a retaining wall, moving the pool down in that direction and, uh, putting a retaining wall gives them a more of a outdoor living area in that corner of the yard.
Great. I think part of that, too, was we were trying to stay within the original blue lines, because that's where they showed, um, the pool from the original subdivision.
Right.
As approved, so, you know, I guess if, if we're, you know, tied up against the blue line, and if it's okay with the board, well, then, then that does make a better location.
Well, the blue line seems to have no meaning at this point to begin with.
Sorry.
It's the brown lines are now the lines.
Right, exactly. And I actually wanted to ask about the, about that. When it came time to construct the house, and one looked at that, uh, I guess it was a rock shelf, that, uh, was there, somebody made the decision that that was an unsafe condition, right?
That was me.
Okay, and then, um, and you built, but you needed, in order to resolve, resolve all of that and get the grates to work, apparently you built a retaining wall along the top of that slope?
Can I tell you that retaining wall along the top of that slope?
Yeah.
Really done for leveling of the fence. Because if you look at the pictures, the only place it's, um, any taller than two feet is behind the first catch basin, and the plan originally showed a wall there. So the vast majority of that wall was really just for leveling of a fence to create a safe area. Do you have a picture of that, Anthony?
I can kind of see it there more.
Oh, I see the fence.
Yeah, so, so unfortunately, what happened is, um, as you're pulling into that driveway without the fence, you were essentially looking downhill to a 50-foot drop, um, which would be scary to anybody. So the idea of the fence was just to soften that view. And, um, behind the catch basin, that was part of the original plan, was a wall on, on the plan as, as it was proposed. And it was just carry that wall over a little bit to keep it flat. But the slope and the filling, um, really wasn't something that was required, that required the wall. The wall in 80% of the area is less than two feet tall.
Well, one would ask, and it's, there's no, I guess I shouldn't bother asking it, but, uh, I'm going to ask it anyway. If you put a fence up, why, why do you feel the necessity to, to fill that slope? I mean, the fence gives you the protection, the, um, the filling the slope apparently was intended to do, so it seems to me that it was just overkill. And it wasn't.
Slope filling was primarily for the pipe. If, if you look at the site plan, um, it was almost impossible, technically probably was impossible, to traverse a machine down that hill with that amount of clearing and grading and that rock outcropping without ad, um, to be able to drive and level the machine. And then in doing so, we left it.
Okay, okay, no, no, thank you. There's no need to go any further on that. But I, I, I think that getting back to the pool, it seems to me anyway, that that the suggestion to move it more into the backyard, and if it means violating a blue line, which apparently has no meaning at this point anyway, then I would, I would say that, go ahead and do it. And I think in the end, you'll end up with a better plan anyway.
Thank you, and I'm in agreement with that. It's, uh, you know, we're, we're already, uh, you know, even, even though I did go past that blue line, I mean, you can talk, you can, Bob can attest to this, you know, 25 years in Newcastle, for the most part, has me obeying that blue line.
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
So, so, yeah, I mean, if, if we. So, so, yeah, I mean, if we redesign that pool location and shift back the pool, we could save some more trees in the front, which would be a natural buffer. We could shrink the size of the pool and it probably would be a smaller wall on the lower side. And again, there should be ample budget for landscaping based on taking out trees for the pool.
Well, I, I would encourage you to, to consider that and then check with staff to see whether or not we need to file any kind of amendment to the tree clearing or steep slopes. And of course, as we mentioned before, when you set forth your, your next plan, again, let's see what the vegetation is between lots six and five. So we have a better understanding what now is there as built in terms of vegetation and whether or not we feel additional vegetation is necessary. And information about the sound and the distance, so we wanna at a minimum see the location of the, the building that's under construction on lot five and that distance. So that's the thing.
Sure.
But again, do it within the confines of the regulation. So if this does trigger the need for a revised steep slope application and, or tree application, let's, let's be sure we do that correctly this time.
Okay.
And on the, on the steep slopes thing, just one other thought that, you know, since there was a slope there, that was very steep, you know, I think that we would appreciate, you know, what's the steepness now? Because it seems like, if anything, you made it less steep and you certainly vegetated it. So that is an improvement from an erosion point of view and a safety point of view.
Thank you.
That's a good, that's a good point, Dick. What I'd recommend too, to your point, Dick, to have him show a section on what was there and what's there now to see what the difference is.
Yeah.
In that letter and attach it to his certification letter.
Yeah.
That makes good sense. Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think we've, we've kinda given you information and the roadmap for the next meeting. So now it comes down to probably scheduling you for continued informal. I guess the next time would be October 20 realistically. Since the October 6 date, the cutoff for submission is September 14. Seems unrealistic for the information you need to put together. So perhaps we should continue the informal hearing for October 20.
But that has a submission deadline of September 28.
Thank you, Sabrina.
John, is that enough?
Me? Oh, yeah, you know, see what we can get the engineer to do.
I guess what the issue, what the issue is, is would they grant a CO for the house while we work through this pool situation?
I don't think so. But I leave that to Sabrina and Bob. She's shaking her head. She's muted.
We've had those discussions.
And also respect.
Sabrina, Sabrina and I and Tom had many discussions on this. I think it'd be very, very difficult. We've never done it. It's set an enormous precedent with Tom DePaul, the building inspector. So I think Sabrina, Tom and I are all in agreement on that. We're no CEO. Till such time, this is all done. You agree, Sabrina?
I do. I, yeah, our perspective on that hasn't changed.
Okay. So we'll look forward to seeing you then on the second meeting in October. And if, if there's, for some reason, you can't get your material ready in time, just let us know. We can push it to.
Or if you get it done in enough time to be placed on the earlier agenda, you know.
I mean, I'll, I'll talk to Anthony and see if that is possible.
So.
After all, it's only engineering.
Yeah, it's, and that's less expensive usually than, you know, legal fees.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Yep. I'm gonna hang out on a couple other ones.
Okay, now we move to our next item. That is an informal application for new application, Albano, 200 South Bedford Road, application for an accessory apartment site. Is Chuck here? Is the applicant here?
He was here before.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Chuck.
Hi, everybody. I didn't know how to turn off my video. I was being pictured. So I put a piece of tape over the picture.
It works.
It worked. I'm here.
No, it wasn't clear tape.
There you go.
So, yeah, let me, let me start sharing the screen if that's okay with everybody. Let's see what we got here. Everybody see it?
Yes.
Very small.
Well, let's see if I can. As big as I can get it. Yeah, it's a Sony. Let's. Here's a location map. The property is at 200 South Bedford Road, which is right here. Let me see if I could get a laser pointer. Yeah, here's the property. And this is Bedford Road, and here's the temple. Temple Bethel. So we get a location map? Yeah. Okay. And here is my site development plan. Oh, that, that shows the, the, the site plan with the drive, the parking, which we'll get into detail in a minute. And then the location of the accessory apartment in the lower level of the house, which is pictured here. This is the back of the house, and as you can see, there's a retaining wall there in a grade change. And that is the back door off of this existing patio, which is right here. And so the intention of the plan is to provide a parking space for the accessory apartment. And then a walkway down around to the back of the building, right here, to access, access the back door of the apartment. And, and what the apartment looks like downstairs is over here. We have, we have a bedroom, we have a living room. Here's the patio and the back door. We have a bathroom and a kitchen with a laundry area over here. This is all pretty much, this is all existing right now, and we'll be building this bedroom as part of the building permit set that we already have approval for. But we do not have approval for putting in the kitchen. We also have approval from the Westchester County Board of Health. Let's see if I can. We have, oops, somebody's, anyway, we have made application because our building inspector took a look at our floor plans and said Board of Health needs to take a look at what our intentions are. We sent it to Board of Health. We showed that we were taking away a bedroom. We were adding a kitchen and a bedroom in the basement, and they have no objection to that. And this is the copy of their, their report. I'll go back up. Again, in the building permit set, which we have a building permit for and we are under construction already, we show this area to be limited until we get planning board approval. This was not allowed to be built. We could do a bedroom down there, but we can't put a kitchen in there until we get approval from the planning board. So the building inspector has had us hold off and, and submit plans with the note saying kitchen is not buildable at this time.
Chuck, where are you? How are you venting the kitchen?
I'm sorry.
How are you venting cooking in the kitchen?
Well, here's the stove, here's the sink, here's the refrigerator, here's a pantry.
Okay. So where's the venting or exhaust hood or, you know, when people cook? They normally have fans on their range or their stove.
Well, yeah, it'll just go, it'll go straight out over the top. I mean, we could also use a duckless. I mean, I have one in my own house, a duckless exhaust hood. This is a, this is a little four burner, 24-inch wide cooktop. And in my accessory apartment, I also have a hood right over the, the range, and it is duckless also. So we just change the filters every six months. All right, but we can't build that yet until, until we get approval to, to call this an accessory apartment.
Right.
And what I wanna do is go, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in on this. By the way, on the upper level, the main level of the house, we have created a den with a four-foot opening that cannot be used as a bedroom, and that's one of the recommendations and requirements of, of the Board of Health. So we have bedroom number two. Bedroom number one is the master bedroom with a bathroom. Bedroom number two is a regular bedroom with a bath off the hall. There's an office den, den slash office, and it ends up being a three-story, a three-bedroom house with a den and two kitchens. All approved by Board of Health and you show the letters. What we did do is we added a laundry room for the owner of the property up here. And we had to extend the garage out four feet, which we did get a zoning variance for a while back. So we have a zoning variance in place. We have a building permit in place to do this new work. And, and now we're at the point of getting a, a permission to create the accessory apartment in the lower level. I would like to blow up this area because Bob had a lot of questions on, on that area. And let me see if I can keep pushing the wrong button. Here is, see, here's the house and the, the new garage. And what we have is a brick surface for the entryway. We had a gravel area here. We had a gravel area here that we're, we're putting blacktop on. You add up these areas and, and, and we created the proper amount of new driveway that's on our plans. But we have two parking places, nine foot wide, 18 foot long. And we have turning radiuses for this car to back out and for him to go forward again and out. The normal person parked in this garage will back up and go out with no problem. So I just wanted, and then he asked, Bob asked for dimensions and radiuses and, and the amount of new square footage for the asphalt. And I tried to provide that on this plan after his review.
Chuck, on the original, I had a question for you. The original upstairs, aside from you're calling it now a den.
Yep.
And removing, I guess, a door and putting in a open area, open four-foot access. Still have closets there. What confidence do we have that it will not be used as a bedroom?
I, I don't know. I mean, but one of, one of the program requirements was to have a den library by the owner anyway. But, but I don't know. It happens on all of the buildings, by the way. Four-foot opening, not the closet, a four-foot opening by definition cannot be closed off by Board of Health standards. It is not considered a bedroom. If it were closed off and you had access to a bathroom on the same floor without going up or down any stairs, that would be considered a bedroom. This is considered a bedroom. This is not because of the opening. Closet has nothing to do with it. You're allowed to have closets in an office. It's, and the closet does not determine bedroom or not bedroom. It's the ability to seal it off and have access to a bathroom or a shower that, that defines bedroom. So the question is, if somebody wanted to put a door in there later, I, we all can't stop that. And people are doing it all the time. The standard procedure is when you wanna decommission a bedroom, you make a four-foot opening. Standard procedure. One other thing that Bob requested was a silt fence. And, and my goodness, my silt fence didn't show up, Bob. I, this is gonna be a, while I have you on, Bob, I, I had a silt fence all along this walkway. Because they're gonna be putting a little, you know, like a slate walkway or something. There'd be some disturbance here. So I had this silt fence. This silt fence. A 36-high silt fence dug into the ground like, you know, like standard workmanship all along that walkway. And I, and I have to apologize. I don't know, I don't know why this particular diagram doesn't show it. Hang on if you, can hang on one minute, please. I'm gonna get out of this and go into this. There it is. This is the silt fence. Can you see it? Bob? Oh, Bob, you're muted, I think.
I don't see it. You're showing like a, you're showing the aerial.
I'm back to, yeah, I'm back to, I'm back to the original site development plan. I don't know why this red line didn't show up. You could see the dotted line all along the walkway.
I mean, could you like make the drawing a little bigger and maybe just put more heavy line type on these things?
About that?
Having very much difficulty trying to read what you did.
Yeah, well, there, that's, that's, is that line thick enough? I can make it thicker.
Yeah, I think that's fine for now.
And, but I do wanna, I just wanted to show you the location because this, there is that walkway. And it leads to the back door. But they're gonna be doing some work on that slope, so I figured that's where you wanted the, the erosion control.
That'd be the logical spot, yes.
Yeah. I also put a little, I also put a little up here where we're adding some new blacktop so that this guy can back up.
I recommend, they have standard details, Chuck. You can get on the New York State DEC website, which has a detail of, of a silt fence. You don't have to draw it from scratch. You can download it, bring in your AutoCAD and put it up. I'd recommend you do that.
I went onto this stormwater management site and, and found what they recommend for small residential construction projects. And that was, that was the fence that they recommended, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine. Shoot, shoot me an email or what you have. Looks like you addressed all my comments.
Okay.
Shoot me the email. I'll take a look at it. If it's fine, it's good.
Okay. We'll do it. Yep. There are other comments that we wanted, you know, we did get a variance. We did get a variance for the four-foot, so we got a 45-foot front yard to play with. And we, based on your comments, we said, we, we brought the parking back 25 feet, half of the 50-foot setback. So the cars are, the cars are, let me, let me what, get back to this. The cars and, hell yeah, please. Laser pointer. The cars are at that, they're, 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 they're set back properly. Let's put it that way. Because here's the front yard, and we're back past the 25-foot mark.
Just show a distance from the 18-foot mark, which is the back of the car.
Yeah.
The outside edge of the asphalt.
Oh, I got it here.
Oh, okay, 33, 11.
33, 11.
Okay, that's fine. Very good.
I got 24-foot radiuses. If that's okay. I know I backed this guy out, and then he just uses this radius to drive.
That's fine. You demonstrated it. It will work.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chuck, does this site have a designated area for an expansion area for septic?
Well, I could, there it is. There, I, I, all I know is this is the data we got from the Board of Health showing the size of the system built back in 1955. I don't know what they did back in 1955. Obviously, the regulations for 1955 are a lot different than they are now, but they went back and said, hey, according to the code, back, back then, this was a force, this is a four-bedroom house. Question is, is there an expansion area? I don't know.
I don't believe back then, I don't believe back then they had that in the regulations to make a 100% expansion. Now they do, of course.
Yeah. Let's take a look.
63 years ago.
We have, we have all of this area to play with. Should there be a problem? Right now the septic, Bob asked to locate the septic.
Yeah, it's on your plan.
Yeah. But this is all available.
Okay, good, good. Okay, thanks Chuck.
Should it be necessary? There's one big giant rock here. I can't tell you what kind of soil, but we have area.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, because you're not expanding the number of bedrooms.
No. It's still a four, as it stands right now, it's a four bedroom system, but we're using, we're making it three bedrooms with a kitchen. So we're using like one bedroom requirement with the kitchen.
Right. Okay. Sabrina, are we required to move to a public hearing on this?
Yes, you are. There are some changes. There were seven points in the planning review memo, Chuck, that I want to draw your attention to. And it's really making sure the information on your plan matches the information in your submission material. So if you could review that in regards to mission.
We already did that and we sent it in and Felicia said, it's too late.
Yeah, we can't, we can't accept the changes, so.
I got it, I got it. But we already did it. I could drop that off. You already have it in your office on PDF. If you want to take a look at that. We did make the changes that we recommended.
All right, just make sure there's enough hard copies for the, the planning board for the next meeting. Mr. Chairman, yes, you should set a public hearing on this. And then if you're comfortable, a draft resolution.
Yeah, it seems to me, based on Chuck's representations, that we have the material there. We just have to make sure we have the original copies. So it sounds like we could schedule this for the October 6th because
Hey, Bob.
Ready. Yep, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Of course, Eldad.
Um, so in general, I'm, I'm very supportive of the concept of accessory apartments. I just have a question about this. And maybe this is a question kind of internally. It's just about length of stay. Is, is there any kind of minimum requirement on how long that apartment, accessory apartment can be rented out for?
No, it has, it's required, the owner occupancy is a requirement. So the property owner has to live on but there is no, um, there is no requirement in the code regarding length of stay.
So it can be rented out on a nightly basis like Airbnb?
I don't believe so. I think that there are building code section and definition of rental controls that.
Has to be at least 30 days. Anything shorter is illegal in Newcastle at this time.
Thanks, Drew.
Okay, very helpful. The reason I, I raise it is because of the proximity to the synagogue. And I wonder, I, I, you know, a more permanent tenant would, you know, in general, treats the property better and, and acts like it's their home on a more permanent basis. And something on, on a short term basis may not have as much respect for the surrounding neighbors, may, you know, wander. And this is obviously incredibly close to the synagogue. And so I, that's why I raised this. And generally, I don't like to put additional, or like to suggest additional constraints on applications, but I wonder if the board would, and if there's any precedent for this, for, for setting minimum lengths of stay.
I don't recall ever having done it besides whatever's in the building code that Drew cited. But then again, I don't recall the question being asked either. So it's, I think it's a matter of first impression, bros.
Drew, do you want to weigh in on that? Can the board be more stringent than the 30 days that is in the building code or not?
I think we'd have to look at that a little bit more, see if there's any precedent for that type of requirement. Typically, it's not one that you see very often. It also depends on what type of length of stay or you, you know, yearly, maybe a yearly requirement. It's something to consider. We can look more at it. I don't want to say offhand that it's definitely not permitted, but it, it is a more unique condition that we don't see very often. But I, you know, I'll, I'll dig into that a little bit more and provide better advice to this board next time.
Chuck, Dick Brownell.
Yes.
How, how, may I ask, how long you typically rent your accessory apartment?
Oh, thank you for asking. First of all, I had the first accessory apartment under the new law back in 1985. They had, as a matter of fact, we made some changes to the code when it said if you have additional, if you have additional accessory structures on your property, which I, I didn't. I just had a barn. And, and they said, oh, I can't give you permission because that barn is not an additional structure. So we changed the law to just straight accessory structures rather than additional accessory structures. However, I've had the last tenant in there for six, six years. And, and I must admit, in the years since 1985 and now, I've had about five, maybe four tenants. One I, one, one I had to get rid of because he was destroying the place. But I would say on average, I, these people stay. At least my barn, anyway. And since I'm living next door, or in this case above, if there's any problem, that guy's gonna be out of there. I guarantee you that. I could speak for my owner.
I think if it's a non-familial rental, then most landlords prefer to have the security of a standard lease, which is a year.
Yep. We have, we have one month's security and my lease, my lease gives me permission to ask him to leave if he does not follow the rules and regulations. So I think the lease is what determines the quality of the tenant.
Yeah, my, my experience, I, many, many years ago, I had a house, we had a house, a real house on Capitol Hill. And there's, we rented out a ground floor, one bedroom apartment. And it was a bigger problem getting tenants out than it was
Oh, yeah.
than it's in.
Yeah.
I, I think in this particular community, transients of the nature that you might be worried about, Eldad, is probably not likely.
I also think that the code requirement for the owner to be on the premises
Definitely.
is also an indicator that, you know, they're looking for permanency in the rental.
I would say that if the, if the temple had a problem, any problem, they talk to my owner and, and that, the problem gets solved.
Good.
So if I may, does the board wish us to draft a, a draft resolution for your consideration as well? Or do you want to hold on that?
No, I think we should, I personally, I think we should move forward with the draft resolution as well on this application.
I agree.
Public hearing for October 6th.
I agree.
Sounds good.
Okay. So do you, do you want to motion on those, Sabrina?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can we combine it so we can do it once?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. Is there a motion then to schedule a public hearing for October 6th? And also to direct the staff to draw a, draw up a resolution for us to consider on October 6th?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Eldad?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, so four eyes. And so we'll see you October 6th, Chuck.
Thank you all. Sabrina, I'll call you tomorrow about, well, these copies. I'll get you all new copies, okay?
Okay, great. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Chuck. Good night.
Okay, we moved now to our next item. And this is a referral from the zoning board of appeals. And this is the King Fisher Philanthropies.
Philanthropic?
Yes, well, no, it's not. It's, you got the IES here, which is really, you know, taking its toll on me. In a round rock preserve, lots 2, 5, and 7, Cynthia Court. So this is a ZBA special use permit application. It's been referred to us, but at the same token, if it moves forward, it's going to require action on our part as well in order to move this forward for the applicants. So I guess there's a lot of history on this that we don't know about, that maybe Sabrina, if you could fill us in on it? And that would be great.
Well, I, I will give you just a quick rundown. The, this application is before the zoning board of appeals for a, a special use permit to allow the property to be used as a preserve or as a park. A park is too general of a term. So the zoning board has been reviewing the application and in accordance with the code requirements, it is being reviewed to your board for comment. The application, I, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I'm gonna let them present what it is they want to do. But there were some questions that the zoning board wanted your board to focus on. In particular, the off-street parking. You know, the number of people on site, you know, these are the issues that have come up before the zoning board of appeals. And they're looking for feedback. In particular, if the, if the zoning board is going to grant the special permit, this application will require six variances. One is regarding access from a major road. Another is a variance from the number of persons allowed onsite at any one time. There's setback requirements for the off-street parking areas. The number of parking spaces and minimum buffer areas and landscaping requirements. Before you engage in any discussion about any of those variances or your perspectives, I think that the applicant should present their project and what they want to do. So you have a better sense of the, they're looking to undertake on the properties. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. John, I don't know if you want to introduce for your team or how you want to go about it.
Thank you, Sabrina. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to be here again. Nice to see you all. Let me just start off with giving you the players. The trustees of the King Fisher Philanthropies are nearby neighbors, Laura and John Damaris. And Laura would like to speak tonight. The chief designer of this preserve is Ellie Hendrickson, landscape architect. She will do the main part of the presentation. She'll be backed up by Tony Grau. Done all the civil engineering. And if there are any particularly intricate questions about the background of the subdivision, the HOA, the like, we have Jerry Tortorella and Adam Wexstein of Hockman Tortorella and Wexstein. They represented Mr. Velardo, who is the applicant who got the subdivision approved. And then unfortunately, it became 2008, 2009 and it went bust. Mark Tullis might appear. I'm not sure. I'm sure you know Mark. So if Laura is ready, I will ask her to please give us a background on how this all came about and what their goals for the property are.
Sure. Thank you, John, and thank you, Planning Board. We're glad to be here. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Great. So my husband and I, John, are the two trustees to King Fisher Philanthropies, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Several years ago, when Mr. Velardo, Velardo, the original developer for the Cynthia Court development went bankrupt, we purchased three of the lots and eventually transferred those lots to King Fisher Philanthropies with the intention of turning those lots into a nature preserve. Our intention for the preserve is that it, that we would repair the damage done by the half-completed construction work and return the property to the natural beauty that was once there. It's a, it's a glorious property with beautiful views. We'd like to return it to its natural fauna and flora. We've been working toward that end, repairing. There were some deep pits. There was some debris. So for the past several years, we've been working on repairing the damage to the property with the intention, hopefully, one day to open it to the public so that it can be, you know, enjoyed by our neighbors. And Ellie and so forth will give you more details about exactly what we have envisioned for the property. But suffice to say that our intentions are that it remain natural. We're not proposing any buildings. We're not proposing any programming, simply a place for people to take quiet, you know, thoughtful walks in the woods. So I think that probably captures our vision. Is there anything you'd like to add, Chuck? So, so our hope is that as soon as is reasonably possible, we can, we can share it with, with the rest of Newcastle.
Now, John and Laura thought, of course, that this was, you know, a preserve pretty much like many of the other pieces of open space in town, but it has been ruled to be an institutional use. Unfortunately, the requirements for institutional use don't match up to a preserve at all. So the property is not big enough. It's, as Sabrina has said, it's not on a major road. And we really prefer not to provide parking. We certainly are happy to limit the number of people on site. We don't think there's any need for a landscape buffer strip since it's a piece of open space. And without any parking, there's no nonetheless, that's, that's where we are. So this is on a referral to you at this point. We anticipate that we would be back before you if the special permit is ever granted. Because part of this is to merge the existing three lots into one lot. And then to grant to the Westchester Land Trust a conservation easement. You probably remember that your board approved, in approving this, the subdivision originally required a conservation easement to the Westchester Land Trust to a large piece of property that is adjacent. So this would all, this would all fit together very well. But let me ask Ellie to show you what this is all going to look like.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen and just give you a little bit of background and share a little bit of where the site is and what we would hope to do and talk about, a little bit more about the adjacent properties that John mentioned. And just share this. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so the outlined area here is actually the Brandywine subdivision, which I know you've already heard a little bit about this evening. The properties under the ownership of King Fisher Philanthropies are these highlighted with the black lines. And there is an existing house here and these other properties to the south are owned by Nick Edge, who you've already heard from tonight. And with these three properties, we have, we are surrounded by property owned here by the town of Newcastle and also Westchester Land Trust property. And so by opening these, these properties, it will just expand the open space within this area, making it even larger. Let me just go. So some of the elements that we would like to achieve to, to, excuse me, sorry, I'm toggling back and forth. In order to achieve the goals that we're interested in for the property, we would like to continue to undo a bit of what was created in the original subdivision. That being a stretch of roadway that was meant to access the different homes on lots 2 and 3 and 4, which is here. We have some constraints in doing all of that and which are a water main that comes up from a water main that comes up from the north side of the property and then extends down the common access drive for the subdivision and then feeds the four properties to the south as well as number one. We would like to propose to remove this portion of drive as well as the easements that exist here. And transfer the water valve that needs to be at a higher point down to this area that will still service these the existing water main. We currently have a little gravel parking area that will be removed and just restored to grass. And we have several mulch trails on the property and a meadow. I'm actually going to bring up something a little bit more illustrative. Which this is the map that we've actually created for the preserve, which was actually approved by the ARB last week. This is part of the signage package that we've put together. And this just shows a little bit of the woods, the meadows, and the very, very simple state of the property and how we would like to move forward with it. This being a mulch trail through the woods. And then some meadows that we had planted when we did the restoration work. For the utility access, what we are proposing is to remove the asphalt along the common access drive up to this turn in the road. We would then like to remove all of the asphalt to this point, and that would include removing the water valve down to this spot so that the town could still access it when needed. This area would then be restored to grass and incorporated into the meadow. And a simple mown trail would be included in that to expand upon the trail systems. And the driveway would be, the asphalt driveway would be taken out and we have proposed this. The sorry, the Nico La concrete pavers that would be have aggregate in the middle to allow for good traction up to the sloped driveway, which is about an average of a 10% slope that's existing. And we would have lawn and reinforced that basically the same the same pavement within the two strips would be planted with lawn and the sides would be reinforced turf to allow for the vehicles of the town to come up to the water main and do their inspections as required through the year. We would like to, as as proposed, we have submitted a lot merger plan, and so these three lots would be merged into one. And we would then not need the various existing easements in these areas, which include drainage easements for proposed structures that will never be built, as well as the water easement that was up into the drive that was also for the homes that will not be built. So we're really just trying to reduce the and and remove the elements of the subdivision that were originally installed. And on doing all of this, we would don't propose changing any of the grading along the driveway. We would simply remove the black the black top and install our new paving system on top of that. We have submitted the specifications for that material along with some images. And really, we just want to turn this back to nature and let people enjoy it.
That's the essentials of it. And I'm sure you have a lot of questions. So is there anything more that we can add?
I think it's a good presentation. Appreciate it.
I guess I would ask, Bob, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I I had one comment which which is only partially relevant. And I say that only because, as John indicated earlier when I first started to talk, my perspective, this is sort of embarrassing from the perspective of a town of of our nature to have this be considered, I mean, the closest we can consider this to be is an institution. And because it's less than 20 acres, we have an applicant who's trying to do what I think is a wonderful thing.
Having to go through all these hoops and different measures in order to dedicate passive land for the town for use of the residents. So it's a town board issue, and I I think one of the things that we might want to do is to send a note to the town board and and ask them to consider a change in the code. I, you know, there aren't many parcels anymore that are 20 acres or or larger. And we need to be able to, I think, as a town, react more effectively, more efficiently to these kinds of requests where the parcels are smaller than 20 acres. So that's my, that's that's my speech on that on that issue, which I thought was I just flummoxed by the same when I was reading through the material and shaking my head saying, here, these folks are trying to do the right thing. And yet we have an application that's going on to great length and lots of detail. And I'm involved with the nature of the conservancy of areas in this this town passive use. And believe me, they introduce parking areas off of very non-used roads. And nothing has gone on like this. So anyway, just my comment, I think it's a town board issue, I think it's a legislative issue. But I I would propose that we we try to signal something to the town board.
I I'm at the point of tearing my hair out over this. What's left? I just remember, Bob, I think you and I are the only ones probably in this meeting who were involved in the original Brandywine subdivision application, which was actually the first application, I think, that I ever saw back in 1995 or 96, whenever that was, when I first joined the the planning board. And it was a shock to me actually back then to see that someone actually thought that this property could be reasonably and logically subdivided into housing lots. Because the nature of the topography alone was such that you'd have to go through through such contortions to in order to make it work that it just seemed unreasonable to me, but there was really no way that we could that we could reasonably deny it because it meant all of the through engineering, there was a way to meet all those those requirements that we have for subdivisions, and it was very, very frustrating to me.
Recall that when you said the 72 units to initially proposed.
Yeah, so I just, I applaud this applicant, these applicants. Laura and John, if I may use your first names. Thank you so much for for your efforts here. And I'm along, I I feel the same way that that Bob does, I think, about this, which is like you showed up to you showed up to play tennis and somebody, you know, put on the table the rules to play a game of basketball. And there's like, how do you how do you resolve that, right? It's just not right. It's just not fair. And and I think Bob's right that somehow we have rules that are working at cross purposes to really the the best the best efforts for the town and for the environment. And I guess I'd like to ask, I drove up there today, I didn't go on the property because there were on the cul-de-sac, there were your two signs and they said, do not enter. So I just went up to the cul-de-sac. And in your application, I noted that there is the the suggestion that because this piece of property is really, I don't want to say remote from the community, but it's buried sort of deep within the community, and it would take some effort to even know where it is and how to get there, that the the intensity of use is actually going to probably be very light, which actually in the end is probably good for the environment. It's like a special place, right? And it can remain a special place. And it probably won't get the kind of traffic that would require a parking lot. I went to that cul-de-sac is, it's one of our giant ash dope cul-de-sacs. It's like, I don't know, what, 60 feet in diameter or something? It seems to me there's probably ample room to park there, the one or two or maybe even three cars that might show up. I'm guessing most of the people are going to be coming from the surrounding neighborhood, not from across town where I live. And so as a consequence, I think you could park cars on there and still get a fire truck in and out. I know that's one of the reasons those cul-de-sacs are so big. And Bob Seoli can speak to that. So I I guess I'd ask if if, and I know that there's a consideration in the, I read over the materials, consideration whether to whether to join the lots or not join the lots, and the pros and cons of those two options. Build an extra parking lot, use the parking lots that's there, use a cul-de-sac for a parking lot. I guess I guess I'd just ask you directly, what is it you want from this board? What do you prefer? What can we support reasonably within the context of what our obligations are? What can we do to support you with the zoning board? I I agree with Bob that there is an issue with respect to the rules with how this ended up in institutional use, I don't know. But I don't, I don't think that we ought to be putting you before the town board. I don't know what that would take for them to then to go ahead and and change the zoning. And I don't know whether that would help. That's a consideration that maybe would make it quicker. Somebody can advise us on that. But I guess specifically, what can we do? In my opinion, we ought to be doing everything we can. What is it we can do specifically to help you get this going and get it through the town?
That's a good question. I'm not sure we know the answer to that, but you know, I think from our point of view is we're desperate to get this thing open to the public and whether we merge the lots or don't merge the lots is not important to us. What's important to us is getting it open. So we actually need guidance from you all to tell us what you think is the most expeditious way to do that, and we'll do it.
If I may interrupt a minute, just to reframe this, you know, the the zoning board is moving forward. This referral is part of that moving forward. One of the issues that the zoning board is dealing with is that parking lot. And Bob Sealy, maybe you want to talk to the parking lot, the applicant can talk to the parking lot. You know, on the one hand, the code requires parking for the use. On the other hand, the applicant is, you know, is is designed a parking lot and put in a parking lot. But it is now requiring heightened engineering standards. So the question is, the applicant has has provided materials saying that there's really not a need for a parking lot. You know, and most of the preserves we have and the open spaces don't have parking lots that are just trailways. I mean, and I don't want to speak for Bob Sealy, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but that has turned into an issue that the zoning board is wrestling with, whether or not to require a parking lot. That I think that they would really love to have feedback from you based on that one particular issue. The jurisdiction for this use, and unfortunately, our code does not have a special use permit for a preserve in residential area. The institutional use category is the best suited code means to accomplish the desired outcome for the applicant. So which is why we have the number of variances we have, and the zoning board will deal with those variances as it see fits, as it sees fit. But I think that there's some real issues in the regards to what the planning board can provide in a memorandum back to the zoning board that will help this applicant get through that process.
John, let me let me just speak to the parking lot, John. Let me let me speak to the parking lot for a second because I think there there's a, you know, maybe a misunderstanding on the parking lot. So as I said in my earlier comments, we're trying to get the land open to the public. Because we had to make it an institutional use, we were told that required parking. So we hired some designers to put in a parking lot. We don't want to put in a parking lot. We were doing it to try to cut through the bureaucracy to get it open. When we went to the board, it was clear the parking lot was creating, you know, issues. So we said, okay, we'll take out the parking lot. We're not trying to make a parking lot. We're just trying to open the land to people to hike. So we did a study around to the other preserves. It looks like very few of them have parking lots. And as the comments were made by the board member just a few minutes ago, the cul-de-sac is plenty big enough for a parking lot. So we don't need a parking lot to this land to the public. We're not, so we don't have a desire to have a parking lot. We don't have desire to merge the lots or not merge the lots. We're looking for the most expeditious way to open the land to the public, and that's really our only goal. So tell us what we need to do to get there.
Can I say one thing with the parking on the street? I checked with the Commissioner of Public Works, Jerry Marshall. And he had informed me just the other day that there is no public parking on cul-de-sacs because of the life safety with the turning movements of a fire truck. And the only people that are allowed to park on that Cynthia Court cul-de-sac would be the residents of that cul-de-sac. And there's only one house on that cul-de-sac, which is surgery. However, with that being said, I would recommend to demonstrate, have your engineer demonstrate to see if a fire truck concerned in that radius, which is, by the way, 85 feet in diameter, with the turning template of a fire truck with parking spots, just in case someone does park there that visits the site, just to ease as ease Jerry Marshall's concerns about that as a solution to the problem. That's what I would recommend at this point. And we can't assume no one's ever going to park there, but if someone does and there's a fire and a fire truck needs to turn around, at least it'll be on record that it can with parking on the cul-de-sac.
So I just have a question about that. Did you, Bob, did you say that that parking on the cul-de-sac is actually allowed for the homeowners who but the park, the cul-de-sac?
That is correct. The homeowners who who live along that cul-de-sac could park on the street on the cul-de-sac, but not anyone that's not living on that street.
Okay, so let's just, this is, this is one of these things that just drives me nuts. So if we were to assume that the cul-de-sac was developed with homes, right? And that instead of this preserve being put in, there was a home put in there and the whole cul-de-sac actually was developed completely with homes. There would be the right to have two or three cars parked on that cul-de-sac. And I'm assuming, because you can park a car on the cul-de-sac, that the fire department has already determined that they can turn a truck around in there, that it's not going to be an impediment to life safety. I mean, if they, I mean, they can do a three-point turn. They do them, I mean, we, anyway. So it occurs to me that that there's something, again, about the regulation, which is actually, you know, getting in the way of doing a good thing. The regulation in this particular case is not really making sense to me. And this is must be one of the frustrations that Laura and John have, is that they keep coming up against these these impediments. So I don't know how my interpretation of this problem would set with the fire department. But it just seems logic to me that this is actually not a problem. It's the problem is in the way the code is written, not the problem. The problem is not in the intention of of these applicants.
Those are all good points, tough to argue with.
One of the things we submitted in the materials was we, you know, these lots were for three houses. And we submitted a traffic analysis. And in fact, there's a lot less traffic if we do what we're proposing than if the three houses have been built. And a lot less cars parked in the cul-de-sac.
The, well, a couple of thoughts. I'll start with the size of the properties. I think that that the town has to change their ordinance for properties that wish to be returned to native original flora and fauna opportunities. And particularly where the these proposed new green spaces are created next to and adjacent to a larger plot of land, which is also being kept as a green space. So that in essence, you know, what happens in my thinking is that it extends the area into a bigger area. And that that should be something that is easy to change in the code, which would particularly help you folks in in certain, I think, in certain aspects. And I don't see why that can't be And I don't see why that can't be done immediately. It's very simple. It's because you have the adjacency, perhaps a letter from the Westchester Land Trust. You know, it's saying that we are looking forward to communicate with and coordinate with this new sector of land. And that would, you know, sort of solidify the, the bounds of, of the properties. Secondly, the cul-de-sac is for a development. And it's, it's a name that somehow is in the, in the rules. So maybe, and I'm going to be facetious. Maybe instead of having a circle, it should be made into a square and just be called a parking area and no longer cul-de-sac. And that way you could get out of that. So it's, it's, maybe that would be helpful. I'm not sure. But certainly talking about it brings a smile, so, or two. So I don't see, I'm with everybody else on this. I don't see what the problem should be. I, I can hear all the problems that exist. But if it's not a cul-de-sac and it's, it's a small piece of property and it's adjacent to a bigger green space, this, this should be, this should be something the town would, would love to do because it just creates a better piece of property overall.
So I, I, I agree that we have a problem with the, with the, the, the code, the zoning code, subdivision regulations. I guess the, you know, the fire situations, life safety. Although I don't think that's a real problem here. I think it's one that just needs to be looked at by and signed off by the fire department. But to, to suggest that we go to the, that the applicant go to the town board and ask them to change the zoning. Unless I'm mistaken, that's needs to be legislated unless I'm mistaken, that, I could be wrong, somebody tell me. That has to go through a public meeting, public review process if we're changing the zoning and boy, that would be, that would be sending them off down another rabbit hole. So I would like to suggest that we address the problem here and now. And my suggestion would be if the zoning board is looking to us for guidance on these things, and they are, that we, that we just declare what we think is the right thing to do here. And to facilitate getting this done. And that we also suggest that Bob, maybe you go to the fire department with the applicant or the applicant goes to the fire department and has, and makes the case.
I will coordinate, I will coordinate that with them.
And so, and that can be, you know, that could be done relatively quickly, I would think, to get that one off the table. That would allow the zoning board to then say, okay, you can park on the cul-de-sac. You don't have to, right? You don't have to build a parking lot. And just, and I would suggest that if it's, if it doesn't make any difference to the zoning board and it doesn't make any difference to this board, that we say that don't join the lots. Leave them as three separate lots. And in that case, unless I'm mistaken, you won't have to come back to the planning board unless there's some other reason, Sabrina, that they might have to come here.
Well, not merging the lots, not merging the lots, as I understand it, will complicate things with the ZBA because it just multiplies the number of variances that they will acquire.
But they can do that in the same meeting. And they can just do it in the same meeting.
I guess, but in theory, it's, it could be a little bit more difficult. I, I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, I was, I was actually finished. Go ahead.
One of the other questions I had is an alternative. I, I, I agree with that. I think we should look at the cul-de-sac as, as something that's useful. But the other issue is I don't understand why the proposed parking lot, at least on one of these drawings I'm looking at, you know, goes in a little bit and it's a gravel parking lot. Most of the preserves in our town have got basically smaller, if where they have a parking area, it's a small little pullout. It accommodates two cars, maybe three cars. I have a bigger one at the end of our street that perhaps now could accommodate five cars. That's probably the largest one I'm aware of. But it seems to me that you could have a pull-off directly from the cul-de-sac, unless there's some sort of rule about having a, something like that directly off a cul-de-sac. And basically have a twenty by twenty foot spot where two cars can be accommodated off of the cul-de-sac. Mulch it, whatever. It doesn't have to be any big deal where we have to have, you know, stormwater, drainage. You know, all these other kinds of things and make it as simple as possible where we have to do that to avoid, if, if we come back and hear that the fire department's got concerns, the DPW continues to have concerns. Maybe the alternative is just to have a, a small little pull-out directly on the, on the cul-de-sac, on lot four. And, and I don't know if the geography is there, if it's relatively level. Twenty feet by twenty feet is not going to require a whole lot of grading, no matter what. The two cars are going in.
Robert, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but there is a code against that too as well. I'm always the bearer of bad news. That would need a variance. Wall Street parking does need to be set back one half the distance from the property line as it would be for the principal residence. So it would need a variance from the ZBA.
Well, that would be a variance that I would support then if we have to go that route. And I think that would make sense if, if there is reluctance on the part of the fire department or DPW with the cul-de-sac. Sense and, and, I mean, I just don't understand why all these other preserves have got these little pull-offs like this. Including some of the town ones.
They're probably after the fact. I'm guessing that they, they may not actually be.
They're grandfathered.
Right.
Well, I guess.
I'm confused.
I want in trouble.
I'm confused. You know, someone said there's one house that's served by the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes, Sordi. They live on the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so.
A part of the subdivision.
Yeah, okay. But there's nobody else there. So in essence, why can't they just have a driveway to their house and turn on their property? I don't, I don't understand it. You don't need a cul-de-sac for one house.
Can I just bring something up really quickly? I'm going to show the plan. So we have actually, if in this, in this area, this, here's the cul-de-sac. This is the driveway for the only owner. This is Chaudry at lot one. Our current driveway is here. This is an extremely steep slope on the common access drive south as well as right here on the cul-de-sac. So where our property line actually abuts this cul-de-sac, the grades are extremely steep. And furthermore, we've discussed amongst ourselves trying to incorporate parallel parking within this space. But again, these slopes are extremely steep. They're like, I don't know, two to one, one to one in some places in this spot. And so there's not an adequate amount of room for people to turn around. Therefore, when we had our, we do have our little gravel parking area. It's over where we want the entrance off of the common, common drive south for the subdivision. However, it also has some grading that does not meet town code, even though it is totally usable, I mean, to my standards, but it does not meet town code. And we would, I, I mean, I, I'm going to speak on behalf of the clients and myself. I think going to the expense of putting an engineered parking lot in this area that has the room. While you can, you can comfortably, because I've done it, pull into this parking spot where it currently exists and out. And but it does not meet code. And therefore, if we wanted to do something that met code, it would require additional disturbance. It would require stone walls. It would require disturbance on the other side of the access drive according to code, which is part of the submission as a previous submittal, which is why we've, we're leaning towards abandoning that. And why that was the best location for any sort of parking, unless we were to go into the property, which would be more disturbance to a place that we're trying to minimize and reduce disturbance and reverse it really. So it, it is somewhat complicated in terms of our, our possibilities.
I will also note that one of the reasons why we reconsidered the parking lot, holding aside all of these issues related to grading, et cetera, was that in response to a report provided to us by, by the environmental engineer, hi- his suggestion was to add bike racks and to encourage biking to the, you know, with the mission of the preserve to be, you know, environmentally correct and, and ecological, that instead substituting bike racks might be the best possible solution.
Well, you might encourage my, mountain biking through the preserve as well. I don't know if you want that or not, but that's something else.
We had, we had, the, the rules of the preserve as currently written do not allow my, mountain bikes, primarily because it, they, it's a preserve and not a park. And so it's intending, we're trying to keep the human impact on the site minimal. And mountain bikes, as exciting as they are, make, you know, you know, they.
We, we have the same rules and we have mountain bikers. So, you know, it's a problem. If you put a bike rack in there, you're going to invite bikers. And that could be, could work against what your, one of your missions.
Thank you for that.
So I, I think there's a few points here that we can all, it seems like we're all in agreement on, which is we're very supportive of this use of the preserve. It makes a ton of sense. In fact, it's welcome. Maybe I, I differ a little bit from the rest of the board in that I, I think the, the parking i- is a great idea. It's, it's like, I know we're talking about a parking lot, but it is for spaces that's, that's proposed. And if the point is to have, to bring people to use the preserve, then parking is critical, right? I mean, let's be realistic. If there's no parking here, you're either going to get people parking where they shouldn't or you're not going to get people. And so four spaces seems like a fair amount. I saw the, the estimates of, of the use of, of the space of that, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty to whatever times a year, that, that seems about right. So, you know, I guess the question before us is, the zoning board is asking for some sort of guidance on, on what Sabrina? On, on the concept, on the parking, on, on, on the variances that they're ruling on? Or just in general, our feeling on, on the subdivision issue or the, the merger?
I, I think they want to know your opinion on all of it. I mean, I think you're, it's being referred to you for comment. So you can be as general as you want to be or as specific as you want to be. You know, I, those issues that you highlighted are issues that the zoning board has been dealing with. And there, you know, if there's opinions on your board as to one way or another to handle it, I think they would want to know.
Got it. I, I, I love the parking. The applicants want to get this done as soon as possible. I think we're supportive of getting it done as soon as possible. And whatever, I, I, I think we all understand that laws, especially zoning laws, can be tricky and create unintended consequences too often. But that is why we have variances, right? That, that, they provide relief from zoning that is otherwise burdensome, right? And so it's, it is indeed silly that this has to be classified as an institutional use. It's not really that, right? This is not a, a, a structure that, that, that will house any kind of institutional use. But if that's the best use that we have based on the zone that we have, then, then we go with that and deal with whatever required variances. And that's exactly the purpose of variances, is to, is to provide relief from zoning that otherwise doesn't make sense to this particular case. And I, I, I mean, the parking makes sense to me. It makes a lot of sense to me. And so from my perspective, we should speak just, you know, if they're looking to us for guidance, we support this. And whatever is easiest and quickest to get it approved as far as the subdivision or the merger question. It's, it's not, it seems that it doesn't matter to the applicants. And I don't know that there's any actual practical difference from our perspective, whether this is three lots or one lot. It doesn't sound like there's going to be any practical difference to the users. And so I, I, I think we should speak and support, again, I'm supportive of the parking and, and then the, the subdivision or not, or merger issue is really just a merger issue, I guess. Is, is from my perspective, it's just whatever's quickest. And I agree with Tom. I mean, if, if, if maintaining the three lots creates additional variances, then so be it. I mean, if, if they can do, you approve one variance, you can approve twelve variances in the same meeting. It all gets at the same ultimate goal here, which is to get this approved as soon as possible so that we can all enjoy it.
Well, I think there's a difference though, Eldad, with regard to getting it approved quickly. And then I, I think from the standpoint of the applicants, the cost and, and expense and time taken to construct the parking. So I agree, we could approve it. We could, you know, get that set. Whether or not that works for the applicant, I think is a rather important issue. So I think there's a dichotomy there. Something where the actual construction and work and expense maybe diverges from approvals.
I'm not sure, I under, Bob, could you clarify that for me? I got a little mixed up there. Sorry.
Yeah, what, what I'm saying is, yeah, you can approve it, but if this is not what the applicant wants to do from the standpoint of mission of the, the preserve and not the least of which is cost and also delay from the standpoint of a construction and all the engineering that's involved with the construction. I think that is inconsistent with, it could be inconsistent with what the applicant's looking for. So I think mere approval is not really the solution.
So, sorry, Bob. So you were speaking then specifically with regard to the parking.
Right. What I'm hearing from the applicant is that our parking spot, lot is something that's been imposed on them. They've looked at it, but they're very unhappy with it from the standpoint, lots of standpoints, but they're very unhappy with it. So, you know, I wouldn't want to see that be something that risks the accomplishment of, of a goal.
So my, let me just give you a, a little bit of my experience here. Since the, the shutdown happened, you know, the COVID shutdown. And over in Getney Park, which we used to go to every day and take our dogs because they could be off leash there, that they put a restriction on the park. I think it's still on where you, you have to have your dogs leashed. We started to go to Warburg Park, which is actually closer to us over here. And there you can have your dog off leash. Well, I don't know whether you're allowed to, but we do. And we do because there's nobody else there. And we go pretty much every morning and sometimes in the afternoon. And it's a, it's a big park and it's right on the road. There are the pull-off parking areas right on the road. And all the times I've been there, there have never been more than two other cars in that parking lot. And that's a, that's a well-known park on a, right on a main road. And so I guess I, what I'm trying to say is to go back to the nature of the way this piece of property is actually deeply, you, you have to go. I'd suggest that if you're not convinced about this, drive to it and you'll see how much, how far you have to go through a neighborhood and through topography to actually get to that cul-de-sac. It really is buried very deep within the community. And to me, it just seems like you're just not going to get, I don't think, the kind of use of this, of this, of this reserve, which is going to require any more than one or two or three spots. And I'm guessing that, I'm hoping that the fire department is going to say, well, gee, if you build homes there instead, we would allow cars to be parked there. We're not building homes there. Why take the right to park cars away from it? Oh, take the, take the right to park cars away from, from the applicant. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So I think I'm agreeing with Bob in that conclusion would allow, and I think it's a reasonable conclusion. That conclusion would allow this applicant to move more quickly, less expensively. And I, again, I think that if they are content with not merging lots, and they are, and the zoning board is content with not merging the lots, and they appear to be looking for some guidance from us, so they would be. That makes it simpler for the, for the applicant as well. And it seems to me that those are really the two, unless I'm mistaken, there's something else on the table. Those are the two big, big questions that the, that the ZBA is looking to us to help them resolve. And I think we could do that tonight by just writing that memo if everybody agrees.
The, the ZBA, of course, has to eventually make the decision here. So, you know, speaking for my clients, we'd, we'd be for my clients, we'd be pleased if your board would like to make those two recommendations.
So I'm, I would not be supportive of suggesting that no parking be provided here. It also sounds like the cul-de-sac is not where the trailhead is, and would require, you know, people parking and then walking. I don't know, I don't know what that dimension is, what that distance is. And I also don't know that is, would it be challenging to walk on that? There was talk of steep slopes.
There is another way, by the way. If we look again at the plan, the trailhead ends at the existing parking, but the other way of getting into this property is simply to walk up the driveway, which is right off the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I'm looking at a map on the website that says authorized personnel only. Is that not the case?
So we, we have created a sign, again, that was proved by the ARB last week, that the entrance sign be on this corner here, and has the, the name of the preserve and an arrow pointing down the common access drive, which is not a steep slope. The steep slopes exist off of the drive. They, they exist along the drive but not on it. The driveway is actually very, very minimal. And the, but there, it is noted that the entrance is to here. And in regards to walking to the entrance, the purpose of the preserve is to walk. So if someone parks in the cul-de-sac and decides that they don't want to walk to the entrance, then they probably shouldn't be visiting the preserve. So, I mean, it is the purpose of it. So, and the authorized vehicles only is to detract from, we actually have a lock to put on the gate. If that is, that the town will have a code for our landscapers and maintenance people, and the owners have the code for, to prevent people from driving up and doing, you know, whatever people do when they drive somewhere in park. So we would prefer that people stay on the paths and use the paths. Walking down the driveway is not that big of a deal. We have provided a pedestrian gate also to the locked driveway gate. But, I mean, the, the enjoyment of the preserve is through the woods. It's through the meadow. It's not up the driveway. So that is our purpose, is to get, get people to this entrance. So.
This condition actually is very similar to Warburg, where the pull-off area to park is joined by a service road that goes into the park, where actually there's a very big facility where they store mulch and, and compost, very big facility. And in order actually to get to the walking trails, you walk down this road for, I don't know, it's a couple hundred yards to get to the, to get to the walking trails.
I heard the applicant say that they don't care if parking is provided or not. And so I would be supportive of encouraging some level of parking. And I also heard that parking is not permitted by town law for non-residents of the cul-de-sac. And so if we don't provide parking and just assume that parking is going to happen on the cul-de-sac, then in essence, we're encouraging illegal parking. And so, you know, I think we're all supportive of the use. And I, you know, if, if, if the rest of the board is not supportive of parking, then, then that's fine as well. But, but I, I just don't understand how we could not, I mean, how, how this could possibly go forward without providing any parking. How will people use it? I mean, that their only way to get here is by car. I mean, I understand we could put bike racks, but realistically, people will come here by car. And if there's a question of intensity of use, then, you know, how many spaces are appropriate? I'm absolutely open to understanding what that is. But the plan shows four spaces. I think that's great. It will require the applicants to incur additional costs. I mean, clearly, but, you know, that's, that's kind of how these things work.
Bob, how do we proceed?
Um, it seems to me, let's see, I mean, on the lot merger, that's an easy one. So that's up to the applicant. I think it would be fair to state to the applicant that if they did pursue a lot merger, it would be a very painless procedure with us. We probably would waive jurisdiction and it would just get done. So that's an easy one. It's a low-hanging fruit.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that? We would waive jurisdiction so they wouldn't have to come back to us?
Yeah, I mean, no, we would, we would probably not have to go to a public hearing, et cetera. It would be relatively, you know, time efficient, cost effective, and it would not be a very lengthy process. It probably would be one or two meetings and that's it. That's the way I anticipate it. So I don't anticipate that there will be any substantial issues. We've, we've seen some recently where lot mergers have actually posed some, some issues and concerns. I don't think we would see it here. It would be, I think, consistent with other lot mergers that we've seen and done over the years, where it's really pro forma, administrative, and we waive our jurisdiction on it so we don't have to go through a public hearing. With regard to the parking, I guess there's, there's sensitivity in terms of the need for parking. I think everyone agrees that there is a need for parking. I think the difference of the issue is whether or not there is the possibility of figuring out a way of using the cul-de-sac for that parking need. I think everyone agrees that there has to be some sort of response for parking, whether it's two cars, three cars, four cars, whatever. I'm not sure what the number is. They proposed four of this. I don't know where that came from. From my perspective, again, based on the size of this park, the location of the park, had some experience with this, four cars seems to be a pretty hefty requirement for this, this, this particular preserve. And, but I think the main concern is we need parking, but at the same token, can we not use the cul-de-sac? Can we not talk with DPW? Can we not talk with the fire department to have the public policy behind that waived? And if there's something that is subject to a variance by the ZBA, I think most of us would support that.
I like that. And when we're all finished, then we can go to the town board and say, change the rules for future-
Yeah, that's, that's something else. But I agree with Tom. I don't think, that is something for this applicant, because I think that would, that would just add so much time and effort.
Correct.
You know, exhaustion. That would be unfair.
And I still struggle over the fact that it's a cul-de-sac for one house, which to me is just a driveway. That's all they need. They don't need a cul-de-sac.
Well, I think, at least from my perspective, Dick, I think I agree with you. And I think that's why I persuaded that I would like to see a pursuit with the fire department and DPW for that reason. I think, again, we do this all the time. We, you know, each parcel of property is, is unique. And each situation can be distinguished from another. And while we like to have the story decisive and follow precedent, by the same token, it's real estate, everything, every single one of these is different. So I think there's some reason to make that distinguishment, distinction. I'm sensitive what Eldad said. And of course, if we, if they come back and say that this doesn't work, now we have a real issue. It sounds to me like a pull-off doesn't work because, again, there are rules against it. And B, more importantly, it looks like we have some drop-off. So I'm not quite sure how that works. Maybe the solution is just to expand the cul-de-sac on one side without having to make it, you know, for parallel parking on the cul-de-sac, a little pullouts for maybe two cars there, without having to disturb steep slopes.
There you go.
So again, I'm not concerned about, as the applicant stated, you know, I'm not concerned about walking down to the trail. That's part of the deal. And that's okay. I don't know. I hope this is not the case. But Bob, do we, does, does any of this construction of a parking lot, will this trigger any sort of ADA requirements, which would just frustrate us that much more?
I think Mr. Kirkpatrick addressed that in a lengthy analysis. I think John can speak on that better about whether this needs ADA or not.
Well, if we don't have to deal with it, it's not being recommended, or it's not being referred to us on that issue. I don't think we really need to get involved in it.
But he didn't need it. Make a long story short, it didn't need it based on John's analysis.
It did.
No.
Wow.
It did not.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. So those are, that would be, those would be my thoughts in terms of putting together a memo to the ZBA on this recommendation, this referral.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I guess. Before we do that, Eldad, does that make you feel a little bit better? Supportive, because I think we do recognize that parking is necessary. It's just, I guess, where and how?
Sure. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I don't care where it is. I just think that it's, it would make sense to have it here. So can you explain to me what you think we're, what would our message be?
What's the motion?
I think the motion would be that we would recognize that there is a need for parking. And from our standpoint, we would recommend that the applicant and the ZBA exhaust the possibility of using the cul-de-sac without any additional disturbance or any additional parking areas as a second consideration. Perhaps they can design some sort of pull-off directly on the cul-de-sac if, for some reason, the fire department and the DPW objects. And then after that, it sounds to me like we are stuck. And then the applicant is going to have to, you know, confront and deal with the issue that the parking is going to have to be provided off the cul-de-sac. And, and, you know, wherever they, they prefer, wherever they can find the spot.
So in that, in that, in, in our recommendation for that, I think that the number of spaces is one of the things that, which is, you know, that, that people are, I think, ZBA is trying to figure out. And listen, they can, the four spaces are tied to the designation of an institutional use. Is that correct? Is that where that number came from?
It's still a variance.
Even four spaces is a variance?
Yes.
Okay. So I think it's up to-
How much variance is that? Turn it roughly. We normally have to see 15 spaces or 10 spaces?
We require 10.
Wow. Where did the four spaces come from? Who threw that number up?
That happens to be the number that John and Lauren decided would, would look nice there. But that was before it was understood, the requirements for retaining wall and the like. So.
Yeah, you might be stuck with four now because that was your number. I don't know how you're going to get around that. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know whether we're in a position to recommend a number of spaces, because I don't think we have any experience in that. I think that would be up to the applicant and the ZBA to figure out.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that, that the, that our, our first choice would be that any parking that can be, if the parking can be accommodated on the cul-de-sac, in whatever manner, that that would be our recommendation. And if it turns out that you can't get four on the cul-de-sac, then I guess you have to build a parking lot. With respect to the lot merger versus not lot merger, again, I would leave it up to the, I mean, I guess we can go ahead and, Bob, you said one or two meetings with us. I don't know what the timeframe is, whether that adds to, to your timeframe, the applicant's timeframe, whether they see that as a further encumbrance, or whether they're, it makes no difference to them if they have to come back to us once or twice to do that. So.
And the other issue is, Tom, it could very well be that they could move forward this application. And at some future point, they can come back to us on a lot merger. For some reason, they wanted to do it. So perhaps, Drew, that would, isn't that an option? They could come back at some future point, once, if they are so, so inclined to come back and, you know, apply for a lot merger on, on one, two, or three lots.
I'd have to come up with Jen, but I believe that the whole purpose of the lot merger was to address some of the problems with the easements. And I don't know if we can, you know, let it go forward without addressing those concerns. Otherwise, there's additional variances that have to be granted if they're not going to merge the lots. And that would have, that has to be decided upfront.
So it sounds, it sounds to me that, that it gets, under that circumstance, that scenario, it's getting kicked to the planning board in order to merge the lots, in order for the ZBA not to have to do so many variances. Right? That's, that's the whole point, right? And so I don't understand the extra step just to, and I'm not disparaging them, but the extra step to make it easier for them to do what they need to do. I don't understand why they can't get all these variances done in one meeting and just, just be done with it.
I, I personally like the idea of merging the lots, because then it makes it easier to say the cul-de-sac doesn't serve a bunch of houses or structures. It's just one lot. And it's not, it's not a, it's, it's no longer a residential lot in reality. I mean, it may be labeled residential, but it's going to be special use.
Well, I thought, I thought that the fact of, that would argue to keep the lots because, anyway. So.
Well, one other thing, to support Dick's idea, I also like it for, for the concept that Dick articulated earlier, in terms of its adjacency to other large lots. It just seems to me it makes it a stronger argument if we're going to use that as something that distinguishes this particular parcel, you know, that it's contiguous to other large lots rather than the three segmented residential lots. Does it make a difference in reality? Probably not, but I think it just looks and sounds better in terms of marketing to the town board for relief there, perhaps even to the zoning board. And if it makes it easier to extinguish the other, the pre-existing easements, I, I think the applicant might be well-served just to go for a merger and be done with it.
Well, so we're going to punt that issue, right? Or we're going to, we're going to say that we want to merge the lots?
I, I personally think we just leave it to the applicant. Okay. Does anyone have a strong feeling? I mean, I think they should do it. And if they do, it will not be painful. And, and we will expedite it. So they should know that, should understand that. But if it makes it easier administratively, go for it. And we're certainly going to support it and make it as, as painless and as quick and effective, efficient as possible.
And I like your word distinguished, because once they're done with that, the only thing left will be this distinguished so-called cul-de-sac. And it will be one of the only ones that we have in town that only has one house on it.
Right, exactly.
So it really shouldn't be a cul-de-sac.
Yep, okay. So we'll, we'll make the recommendation in terms of the parking. As I, if there's a motion to support the, that tiered approach that I mentioned. And then with regard to the merger, let the zoning board know that if the applicant wishes to merge, we stand ready to help the applicant and make it as quick and as efficient as possible. But we leave it to the applicant as to whether or not they want to pursue the merging at this point.
Perfect.
Yep, we're not that desperate for business.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, Eldad, is that okay?
Yes.
And applicants, most importantly, applicants, have we put you to sleep yet? Or does it sound at least acceptable to your folks?
We're very happy to have the support and we appreciate your time and we appreciate your enthusiasm for the project. We're still enthusiastic about it as well.
And you're deep thinking about all these matters. They are complex and we really appreciate your, your, your thought and, and a careful conversation about it. We've learned tonight as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you want to see a draft of the memo prior to-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you want to see a draft of the memo prior to submitting it to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, please, if you would. And it's going to be heard on there with the September 30th agenda.
We are not sure yet.
That's their first meeting in September, right? They're only meeting in September?
Yes, they only meet once a month.
They meet only once a month. It's amazing.
Yeah, we will try and get to a draft within the next couple of days.
Okay.
Good. And I have one last comment. As a retired environmental engineer, I read the original regs at one time. And so I, I came up with a saying that I think applies here too, that if you read all the regs that are environmental and you understand them, then you read them wrong.
Well, we got you to chuckle, John.
I've read the same regs.
Well, I just, I'd just like to, I know it's time to go, but before we do, I'd just like to say thank you to you guys for doing this. This is just unbelievably beautiful town. We live in a forest and, and we, as much of the forest as we can preserve while balancing all the other things we have to balance. I just think it adds that much more to the town and, and the county and, and the state. And it just goes on and on and on. And these, these are very, very important things to do. And I personally am very appreciative. Thank you.
Yep. Here, here. I echo that. Thank you, Tom. Okay, so we'll get that memo and perhaps we'll see in the future, perhaps we will not in terms of merger. But we'll get the memo out to the ZBA and get copies out to you as well so that you know what we've, what we've done. So again, thank you very much and have a great evening.
Good night.
And enjoy the rest of your journey.
Yep. Okay, we have two quick things left on our agenda. One is a request for, well, they're both requests for extensions of approval. The first one is Citron. This is formerly the Manic subdivision lot number one. This is a request for an extension to submit final preliminary subdivision plat, final re-subdivision plat, integrated plot plan, steep slopes permit, wetlands permit, tree permit at 123 and 127 Westwood Drive. I don't, I've lost count, but this is not the first time, obviously, we've seen this request from this applicant. In fact, Bob, I guess, put together a memo and, and to show us that this has been around for a while. The applicant states in there that they're working carefully with folks and moving forward. I don't want to put words in Bob's mouth. He can tell us how frequently he's spoken with the applicant in connection with this application.
Basically, I believe I sent correspondence to Mr. Citron, the applicant's engineer, applicant's attorney, I believe. I don't have the memo in front of me, but it was at least a year and a half ago indicating all the outstanding items on the resolution. And then I haven't heard back from anybody since. And there's still, as you can see from the memo, as compared to the resolution, there's quite a bit of outstanding items left to be done.
So, you know, look, we've all been through a lockdown. COVID certainly has pushed everyone back at least six months. But by the same token, this is now pushing on to, I guess, three years. In my conversation with Bob earlier, it may not be the record, but it's probably going to be already in the top 10, maybe the top five in terms of delay from approval to actual activity. I, I certainly, I don't believe there've been any changes in regulations or law, so there's no real pressing need to, you know, close this down and reopen it, rehear it. I don't think there's much appetite to do that. By the same token, it would be good to see what this applicant really is doing. I talked to Jennifer about this and she proposed two alternatives if we are so inclined. And that is to approve it with some conditions and tell them that we want, if there's any future requests for extensions, that they have to come before the board and give a detailed description of what's going on, what the holdup is. Or in the alternative is hold this over to the next meeting and request the applicant to come in at this point and explain what's going on. And I don't know if there's any appetite for either of those from board members. I think the holdover might be a little bit, a little bit steep in, in view of COVID. But I think at some point, you know, this thing is, we're really, we're hearing, we're getting the same form letter each time that we're working on it. We're, we're dealing with everyone and clearly, that's not, may not be the case.
I'm here on behalf of Dave Sessions, who usually works on the project. He was unable to make it.
Can't hear you.
I'm, I'm here on behalf of Dave Sessions, who, who usually works on this project. And, you know, he, he asked me, well, he's away, to fill in for him. And it's, I'm under the understanding that they are working on resolving these conditions of the resolution.
Okay.
Well, working on it, that's nice, but is there an endpoint in sight?
Yeah, that's the information I'd have to go back and find out.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to speak too much on a project I'm not 100% familiar with.
So Bob, I'd be in favor of your, your first suggestion, which is to grant the extension. And then if another extension is requested, that they would need to come before us and explain what they're doing. So, I mean, like you said, there, there's very little harm, but there is some harm. There is a, a, you know, a, you know, sort of a feeling of a waste of time. And, and, and at some point, it, it does get to be too, too much. And perhaps we're nearing that point.
Yep. I, I agree with that one, with that position, Eldad. I would support that.
Yeah, me too.
All right, me too. Okay. So is there a motion to grant the approval sought by the applicant, but with the caveat that if there are future extensions, the applicant must appear before the board and provide a detailed explanation behind the delays or need for extension. Okay, second?
Second.
Tom?
Yes?
Eldad?
Yes.
And Dick?
I'm still thinking about it. All right, yes.
And I'm a yes. And so it carries four zero. And the last one is the Pirillo Becker Birak Durst. This is a request for a complete, or an extension to complete a limited amount of new work, including wetland mitigation and the installation of Barker's monuments along the boundary of the clearing and grading limit line, application for a subdivision amendment, for a lot line amendment, clearing grading limit line amendment, steep slopes permit, wetlands permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals. Twenty-four and fourteen trails end. This is a rookie by comparison in terms of the extension requested. And from what I understand, some real work is, has gone forward. And this is just one of those things with COVID and otherwise, that they just need some additional time.
Sounds good.
Is there a motion to grant the?
Wait a minute. Why, why do they need, you know, 13 months? I guess they're looking for a 13-month extension, right? Or just about. It's a long time. I know it's, it's an interesting piece of property, but there's not a lot of wetland mitigation and that has to be done. The installation work of monuments, that can, that just takes a couple of days, really, maybe a week or two. So I don't understand why what's described here is going to take 12 and a half months. So I'd be delighted to, you know, give them seven months.
Okay. Drew, is there any particular reason that we would have to go in blocks of a year versus six months on these, this extension?
I'm, I'm less than I were new castles of extension provisions. Usually it's set forth in the code of the prior resolution that the extension would be granted for a year. Just trying to pull up the memo now.
Are you aware of any kind of requirement or limitation or expectancy that we, we use certain blocks of time? I know there's certain minimums for the applicant.
There are minimums. Sometimes there are. I think that, you know, it really depends on the extension. And I don't have it in front of me right now. A lot of the, the requirements change when they lifted the number of times you could extend something.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, well, right, since this is you know, like someone suggested, they're rookies at this extension. And that we should give them a year.
Yeah.
It looks like the board could, could give less time if they, if they wanted to. There's no.
No requirement for a maximum, for a minimum, okay.
You know, I, I'm guessing that sometimes people just, things happen, right? And they just need to take a pause and rethink, right? Whether they necessarily really want to do the work and, and outside circumstances get in the way. And we can't project into everybody's situation to know whether that's true or not true. But, I mean, I think it's, it's fair to suggest that, you know, these things can happen. And what's the harm in accommodating it in this particular case, as you say, because it's not like they're trying to take the board for a ride necessarily. It's just, you know, for whatever reasons, time, maybe they're just taking a pause.
Well, you're, this one, it sounds like, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter. Give them the year.
Okay.
I can tell you, a lot of times we try and match up other permits and whatnot with
Right.
You know.
Good. All right. So is there a motion then to grant the, the extension request from the applicant as requested? Second?
Second.
Okay, Eldad?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
And Dick?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm, yeah, so that's four zero. So the motion's carried. Okay. I think that's about it.
Hey, Bob?
Everyone?
Bob?
Yes.
I'd just like to follow up on something. In July, June, we had a bit of a conversation, clarification, and I'd just like to follow up on that. Having to do with when there is a, a violation on matters that, that pertain to planning board authorities, significant violations, and the, the person has been discovered and is told to, to correct the violation. What the process is that the town takes to ensure that that work is done and that the work is done properly. And I just want to revisit this because I'm curious, there are some cases that are actually very egregious and very harmful to the environment. And I can name three right away, which I'm not going to. But, and so the question is there, I know it's hard or difficult to require, I think there ought to be documents to document filed somewhere that document what the rest, what it needs to be restored to. And it's more than just a plan, but I'll use an architecture term. It's the means and methods of construction, how that actually gets done. And the means and methods are important in this particular case because it has to do with silt fences. It has to do with all the things that Bob in particular is expert on. All the things that we require in every applicant who comes before us, who does it the right way, is trying to do it the right way. And we are very, very tough and very meticulous on these applicants. And I'd just like to know whether we actually follow through to that level of detail. And if there are documents that are produced in order to, and, and procedures that are put in place that are tied to the documents that are put, that are issued, to see that that's done and done properly. So I don't know, that's maybe, I don't know, Bob, you're involved in these site visits, not in these cases. If Dennis is, Sabrina, maybe you can inform us. We did a bit of a conversation about.
Well, you want to talk about that now, or is it a question?
For me, it's still an outstanding issue.
I mean, in general.
It's a question.
Oh, in general, and just in general, in terms of generalities, we always inspect anything having to do with erosion controls in our office. Terry looks at that, Dennis looks at it, sometimes Tom looks at it. And any bigger project, we use some discretion on what type of submittals we need regarding on the importance or life safety of what's being built. For instance, if there's retaining walls, obviously we retain as-built certifications, engineer certifications. When it comes to erosion controls, we always require in the bigger cases for their applicant's engineer to inspect it. And they have to give us their inspection reports. Terry confirms what they do. If there's any problems, issues regarding a particular with erosion controls, we have the authority to give them violations on that, stop work orders, appearance tickets. So, I mean, we do keep track of all the inspections that we do in our office. Depending on the intent and the scope of work that has to be done, depending on the magnitude of work as well.
So I understand that to be the case for and applications. Is this also the case for violations and correction, corrections violations?
Yes. I mean, if there is something significant that the applicant has to do and it comes before Tom, Dennis, I, or Sabrina, and we look at it and there's plans submitted, the whole reason for the plan is to keep track of what they have to do based on what they submit on the plan.
Okay.
So we do follow up on everything.
Great. That's great.
Yes, we do.
It's good to know. Thank you. Okay, that's it, Bob.
Okay. Anyone else anything? Okay. If not, is there a motion to close the meeting?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
We'll do this all, all in favor because it'll be four zero, right?
Right.
Yes, I.
I, I, yes.